We follow this meeting each year with a regular meeting of the Board of Education. If you are in the room when we say the Pledge Allegiance, you have to stay through the entire meeting.[32.71][32.71](laughter) So if you're on your way out, congratulations to all of you and thank you for coming. Tonight will be a little bit different, only in that our normal board meeting room that has everything set up perfectly for both the board members and the audience and the TV is a little bit more difficult here. So we're going to start the meeting with the roll call and Pledge of Allegiance down here and then turn it over to the math presentation that will be down here. We will go back to the stage for the Q and A because if we're not onstage in front of the microphones, Jerry will be back into the silent film era. Because later on in the evening, we do have a presentation on Riverfield Project. I'm sorry, Jennifer, but we'll be back down here again and again back up for questions. So that's the logistics, if you will. If I could have, well, first the roll call. Everybody's out of order here. Mr. Lou is present, Mrs. Maxine Cannelli is present, Mr. Convetito is present, Mrs. Gerber is present, Ms. Iacona is present, and Mr. Carey is present and Mr. Fattabene is present. Mrs. Brand is on a trip with her husband, so cannot make it tonight, and Mr. Dwyer is present. If I could have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. We have the first business item, which is the presentation of the secondary math curriculum and resources for grades six to 10. This is a presentation tonight, and then it will be a voting matter at the next board meeting for board members as well as members of the community. Enclosures one and two are the focus of this presentation, and I think Dr. Meg Boyce is going to lead us off, correct? And again, we'll, once the presentation is over, we'll have to get up on the stage to begin the Q and A.
(inaudible)
This evening's presentation has three parts, and I'd like to briefly go over what those are. The first part will be an overview of the curriculum review process that we used in reviewing the mathematics curriculum from grades six through 10. Next will be an overview of the curriculum document structure and some examples illustrating improvements to the curriculum. And finally, a brief explanation of the domains of the Common Core and expected fluencies. Part two will address our resource search process and recommendations, and part three will address next steps. Dr. Paul Rasmussen will lead the presentation and I'd like to turn this over to him at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Boyce. I also would like to welcome the Board of Ed members here tonight and for our presentation as we lead into our change in our proposed curriculum as we are in this tonight. Also, I'd like to recognize all teachers and administrators who helped out along in this process. It was a long process. We involved a lot of different stakeholders. Your feedback was greatly appreciated. And lastly, I'd like to recognize the members of the public. We had a good amount of parents and also community members that were actually part of our committees along the way. For your hard work, I also thank you. As Dr. Boyce talked about at the very beginning, we, our first part of our presentation is on the curriculum. Our goal for this night is for our proposed curriculum is to improve the mathematical learning for all students. Based upon the data that we've been collecting, our, pretty our greatest area of need that we've kind of identified from our past data for, is, and this, for example, in the eighth grade, we were looking to improve our students' achievement in approximating measures and estimating solutions to problems. In grade seven, we're looking to improve, again, approximating measures and spatial relationships, and also in grade six, approximating measures, you can see a theme here, and also computation with fractions and integers. At the high school level, we've also, we identified a different CAP data, and we want to help improve our students' ability to reason algebraically. Also, we would like to improve our SAT, our student SAT achievement. Can't see behind me, here we go. So also from this time in review, our last curriculum review is in 2006. Since this time, we've had a change in standards at the state level. Specifically, Connecticut adopted the Common Core State Standards in July 2010. From this adoption, we also have a different assessment coming down the road. This assessment of standards will begin in the 2014-2015 school year. Lastly, we would like to align to our elementary curriculum. I mean, prove that we improved also earlier this year in terms of the K, pre-K through two, and also the three through five last year. This next section of the presentation, I will give a brief overview to the structure of the curriculum documents. This information is important as to show you the specific information and improvements in our documents. If you could, could you please access the pre-algebra curriculum document that is actually provided to you tonight? The first aspect I want to draw your attention to is the course description. This page provides you what I call the critical areas of focus for the course. This information provides a one-page informational sheet to what its students are expected to know and do after the completion of the course. All proposed curriculum documents are presented to you, have this information. The feedback from the parent focus groups really helped out in these areas, these sections of the documents. They really helped out in providing suggestions in formatting and also more friendly language. For this feedback, I, we thank the parents. The next aspect that I would like to identify is the, we call the next page, if you actually turn the page, is actually the pacing information that goes along with our units. As you notice, the particular curriculum document has nine units to study, ranging from as little as three weeks to five weeks. The second item that I want to identify on this page is the course overview. This information illustrates our four central understandings in mathematics carried on throughout our courses. From here, this page also illustrates the essential questions that are related to the central understandings in the curriculum. Turning to the next page, this illustrates the mathematical practices that are written into our curriculum documents. These mathematical practices are common to what we expect students, not only in middle school and high school, but also what was approved in the elementary curriculum documents. Additionally, this page illustrates specific grade level expectations for these eight The last page that I want you to turn to, if you turn to the unit one. This last illustration I want to give you is the unit descriptors. This information begins with the unit narrative, the various big ideas that are taught, the specific essential questions, and what, and the standards that we expect students to know in the unit. The last aspect that I want to talk to you about in terms of our curriculum documents goes back to our past curric, actually, our current curriculum documents. Please notice that each unit did not have a general unit narrative. Having this description in the proposed curriculum document is an improvement in what teachers, parents, and administrators can gain, so they can gain a common understanding of what we expect students to know and do in the classroom. Additionally, the standards that we have, have been updated in our current curriculum documents. The new standards are more specific than our current curriculum and also will help out teachers to be, to design our lessons and assessments. Lastly, you can notice in this current curriculum documents is the pacing. The pacing actually, this document illustrates a nine week, nine and a half week unit based off our past NCTM standards. Our proposed units are more concise and clear compared to our current curriculum documents, thus making these units more teachable. Thus, these examples illustrate how our draft documents are an improvement over our current curriculum documents. The next, the next aspect that I'm actually going to turn over to the teachers, they're actually going to talk about the different changes to our courses, starting in grade six and then going all the way through our geometry courses. I'll be turning it over to Nicole Masala, our sixth grade teacher.
My name is Nicole Masala. I've been a grade six teacher at Fairfield Woods Middle School for 10 years. This is my ninth year teaching math there. There are similarities between the current and proposed grade six curriculum. Sixth graders will still study number operations, geometry, including area and volume concepts, data and statistics, algebraic reasoning and problem solving. However, the proposed curriculum delves much deeper into several areas, most notably the concepts of ratio and rate, understanding division of fractions, and working with positive and negative numbers. The proposed curriculum also has differences. Several topics have been moved from grade six to grade five. Students are now expected to come to middle school having mastered fraction, addition and subtraction concepts. The concepts of perimeter and area are also extended from fifth grade. In the Math Six course, students will learn the division of fractions using models and real-life applications. In addition, they will use ratio tables to solve proportions and use nets as a strategy to determine, to compute surface area. Students in Math Six are also expected to learn several algebraic concepts that lay the foundation for future coursework. Some examples include learning what a variable is, understanding absolute value, and the concept of inequalities. The students in this transition to pre-algebra course will still be exposed to the same foundational topics as the Math Six course. In addition, students will explore integers and rational numbers, along with extending the area concepts developed in grade five. The students also begin to think proportionally through the use of ratio tables, investigate various ways to represent data, and develop algebraic concepts. The improvements in the transition to pre-algebra are similar to that of the Math Six course as content has been moved down from higher grades. The difference between the two courses is the inclusion of two grade seven units at the end of the year. Within these two additional units, students will develop and apply two- and three-dimensional geometry concepts, including properties of circles, and operations with positive and negative integers.
My name is Michelle Taddy. I am currently in my second year of teaching mathematics at Tomlinson Middle School. I have taught Math Seven, Pre-Algebra Seven, as well as Pre-Algebra in eighth grade. Here are some of the similarities between the current Math Seven curriculum and the proposed Math Seven curriculum. As you can see, students will still be learning similar topics such as operations with integers and rational numbers. Students will still focus on some basic pre-algebra skills to prepare them for the next course in the progression, Pre-Algebra Eight. Another large area of focus is on ratios and proportions and providing our students with strong proportional thinking skills. Here I have outlined the main differences between the current Math Seven curriculum and the proposed curriculum. Moving this content will allow more time for students to focus on more rigorous topics that they need to move through the progression of proposed math courses. For example, students are not only expected in seventh grade to apply the formulas for area and circumference, but they are expected to be able to derive and explain where those formulas come from. The proposed Pre-Algebra Seven curriculum will still prepare students for algebra in the following year. Students will still be solving and graphing equations extensively. They will still be learning ratios and proportions, statistics, and geometry. As in the proposed Math Seven curriculum, most of the differences in proposed Pre-Algebra Seven curriculum exist in the extensiveness of application and reasoning skills. Topics such as powers of 10 and comparing numbers have been moved to earlier grades. In the proposed curriculum, students will be solving and graphing multistep inequalities, proving the Pythagorean theorem and its converse, and analyzing geometric concepts including dilations, special angles, and linear functions.
Good evening. My name is Minnie Zachia. I am the math resource teacher at Tomlinson Middle School. This is my 17th year teaching middle school math in Fairfield. I taught eighth grade pre-algebra and algebra for 16 years. The current pre-algebra curriculum has four units. The proposed eighth grade pre-algebra curriculum has seven units. These units are closely aligned to the grade level standards identified in the Common Core State Standards. Many of the same topics will continue to be taught and learned in Pre-Algebra Eight course. There are topics that were taught in the current eighth grade pre-algebra that have been shifted to different courses in earlier grades. Previously in grade eight, order of operations was taught in-depth but will be mastered in grade six. Computation with rational numbers will be mastered in grade seven. Equivalents of fractions, decimals, and percents and ratios will be introduced in earlier grades with mastery expected in grade seven. Number lines and grids and basic coordinate plane will be introduced in earlier grades with mastery in grade six. Volume of cubes and right prisms will be mastered in grade seven. The unit on Pythagorean theorem requires five weeks to allow for a more in-depth exploration, understanding, and application. The standards require students to learn about functions, slope and systems of linear relationships in Pre-Algebra Eight rather than in Algebra, which they are currently taught. The proposed eighth grade algebra curriculum is aligned with the Common Core and has nine more specific units instead of six units in our current algebra curriculum. The five central understandings of algebra are still present in our proposed Algebra Eight curriculum, as illustrated on the slide. These topics that were previously taught in algebra during the first two months of the course will be shifted to earlier courses. The topics are algebraic expressions and equations and basic graphing. Similarly, topics for more advanced courses would be shifted to Algebra Eight, as noted on the screen.
My name is Seth Frye, and this is my 13th year teaching, all of which have been in Fairfield, at Fairfield High School and Fairfield Ward High School. I have taught first-year students of all ability levels in several courses in my time at the high school. I have had them in Honors Algebra Two, Geometry, both honors and Level Two, Algebra Twelve, and a course we no longer have, Integrated Algebra Geometry 13. I have taught Algebra Twelve almost every year, including teaching collaboratively with special education teachers. When I began my career, many of the curriculum documents were being formally written for the first time. I have seen slight changes in the format of the documents, the order of the topics being taught, and the books that we have used. Truthfully, there have been many more similarities in the courses, in the course over the years than differences. As has been the case seemingly forever in Algebra Twelve, linear functions are a major topic of the course. Secondly, solving one- and two-variable equations with multiple steps is still included. Students will still spend much time graphing linear equations, quadratic equations, and some time on other equations in the family of functions. They will also spend time defining functions and exploring the four ways functions can be represented: a graph, a table, an equation, a situation. Students will still factor polynomial functions, along with set up and solve systems of linear equations by graphing substitution and elimination. Quadratics were and still are part of our Algebra Twelve, but as I will explain next, students will study quadratics in greater depth in our proposed curriculum. Due to the proposed improvements in our middle school curriculum, there will no longer be a need to teach some topics such as laws of exponents and algebraic expressions. The students will go into more depth on certain units in our proposed curriculum, as seen on the slide above. In our proposed quadratic unit, students will complete the square, which is currently done in Algebra Two. The statistics unit in our proposed curriculum is much more in-depth than in our current curriculum. Students currently study the basics as they relate to linear functions, but in the proposed curriculum, students will study more specific statistics topics such as causation versus correlation and standard deviation. More than ever, students will be expected to apply theory to real-life problems, support their ideas, and interpret their answers. There are more expectations that the students will work with technology as part of the lessons and performance tasks. In addition to linear and quadratic functions, students will also explore tables and graphs
Good evening. My name is Katie Poole. I'm currently in my 10th year of teaching at Fairfield-Double High School. I've taught honors geometry for nine years, and I also have a few years of experience with teaching the general level geometry course. The proposed curriculum for Geometry 21 and Geometry 22 has many similarities to the current curriculum used in Fairfield. Students will still focus on the basics of geometry in terms of geometric definitions and transformations, triangle congruence, properties of quadrilaterals, circles, and While there have been many additions to the proposed geometry curriculum, some content has been moved. As previously stated, some topics such as three-dimensional relationships are now included at the middle school level. In the proposed curriculum, students will construct various geometric objects and explore different relationships using both traditional tools such as a straight edge and compass and computer software such as Google SketchUp and Geometer Sketchpad. The focus on transformations is much more rigorous than in the past. Students will also study conics in more depth than in the past, whereas students currently study conics in our Algebra Two course. Finally, students will learn additional trigonometry topics such as law of sine and cosine, and will find the area of a triangle using a formula that is traditionally taught
Thank you very much. One of the strengths of the Common Core State Standards is what we call the domain continuums. As the approved elementary curricula focused on six domains, the middle school shifts to build off of these prior understandings with five domains each year. For example, in grade six, the ratio and proportional thinkings are introduced and developed. These concepts help build into the functional concepts in grade eight and into the high school. Another domain, major domain, is the area of geometry. This domain begins in the elementary school, builds through the middle school, and finishes in the high school. Now let's, now let's look at a few tasks that run through geometry, the geometry domain progression from grade six through the high school. This first standard actually runs through, in our geometry, it actually has students, actually that builds off our grade five expectations where they actually will be finding volume. But in terms of grade six, we actually build off this by actually adding into the fractional side lengths. You actually will see in our next, on this task that I have listed here, this task relates to what students are expected by looking at this, through looking through all the different information. They have to find the volume of the truck, have to find the volume of the box, then determine on how many boxes fit in the truck. This is a grade six standard. The grade seven standard that actually works off of this is a continuation that will, well, we're expected to solve real-world problems with volume and area. Similar to this, will actually, they will build off into triangular prisms. So they actually will work with two- and three-dimensional objects composed of triangles, quadrants, polygons, cubes, and also right prisms. For the seventh grade task, students are expected to find the volume of this triangular prism by first finding the area of the base, then using that information to find the volume of the object. Now working to the grade eight, this task illustrates what students are expected to know, how to use the formulas of volumes and cones, cylinders, and spheres. As you can see, the students build off their understanding of three-dimensional objects. As, for example, on this task, they actually have to use this information of the cone on the left, find the volume of it first, then use that information to work backwards to find the radius of the sphere on the right. Again, this is a great, now a grade eight standard. The progression of this actually goes on to the high school. This next task that I have behind me actually builds off of this. On this task, this actually has a, well, the students actually have to investigate the different configurations of stacking a box of cans into a box. They have to actually look into the different arrangements of these 12 cans. Then from this information, they actually have to look at, compare this and see what's the most efficient way to stack cans based off of a method B. If you actually want to go on further this, I can hold the lesson after the, after the presentation, and we can go into that. Okay? From here, we actually build into what we call the fluencies into our curriculum. As they approve, as you approve the grade in grades K through five, these are the expected fluencies as they build through the curriculum. The next set of skills are what we expect students to be fluent in in grade six and all the way through algebra. We actually have the students build into multi-digit division and also decimal operations in grade six, solving two-step equations in grade seven, solving systems of equation in grade eight, and also solving complex equations and inequalities in grade eight, and also factoring quadratics. The next aspect of the other presentation actually goes into the resource search process. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Boyce as she kind of transitions into this section of the presentation.
I hope you found that part one interesting and it brought back many positive memories of time you spent in math class and rang a few bells. Part two is the resource review process. We will talk about the initial teacher search of materials, the final resource review committee, the teacher survey, and the community resource viewing and feedback on the resources. And to lead us in this section, I'd like to introduce Mr. Mark Friedman, the PTA Curriculum Representative, and Ms. Beth Griggs, the MRT Math Resource Teacher at Fairfield Woods Middle School.
I'm Mark Friedman, and I am the PTA Curriculum Vice President this year and a parent of two young boys from Sherman Elementary School. And I am here tonight to provide a parent's insight into the process used during the review of resources at the secondary level. The search for secondary resources was thorough. The committee involved parents, teachers, outside consultant, and administrators. We heard from five different resources during our review at each level. During this review, we had time with each publisher to ask questions about their presentations. This process gave us an opportunity to delve deeper into what was going to be the best resource for our students, teachers, and parents. For example, parents and teachers prompted the publishers about assessment, as well as the various technology components. This helped us gain a deeper understanding of the merits of each resource. Additionally, the committee was given a rating sheet with specific criteria to help guide us what to look for with the resources. After these presentations, the committee members were given samples of the various resources to take home, and this allowed us to review them in greater depth. Upon conclusion of the presentations, we had an opportunity to look through the resources independently and talk together as a group. This feedback allowed the committee to state what we felt were positives and negatives for each resource. And lastly, the public also had an opportunity to review the materials and provide feedback. These materials were at Central Office for the public to view and provide feedback for eight days, including two nights with BOE members. Many people dedicated a tremendous amount of time and care to this process, and it was a process that allowed teachers, parents, and administrators an opportunity to provide their input on the various resources that were reviewed. At this time, I'd like to turn things over to Beth Griggs.
Good evening. As Artis stated, my name is Beth Griggs, and I'm the Math Resource Specialist at Fairfield Woods. I've been working there for 20 years, teaching predominantly math, but also science. And in my position as the math resource teacher, And in my position as the Math Resource Teacher, I work with general education students who struggle with mathematics, and I also serve as an instructional coach to our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade teachers, helping them to implement this new curriculum we've been discussing all night. I'm here tonight to speak about the process we use to choose the best resource for our needs to implement the curriculum. The first day consisted of about 20 teachers looking at different publishers. We had access to resources for all grade levels and the teacher resources that went along with them. A checklist for every publisher was completed by each teacher, focusing on many areas important to teaching the Common Core State Standards. We looked for resources that offered a variety of learning modalities. We looked for resources that included authentic situations and word problems, opportunities to write about math, and provide opportunities for student-to-student discourse. In all, there were 13 different focus points. Each teacher wrote about what would impress them and what questions or concerns they had when examining the text. At the conclusion of this first day, each teacher rated the textbooks listing what they believed were the top-five candidates that met our needs. The second phase of the textbook selection narrowed the choices to the top-five, but expanded the reviewers to include parents, experts, and other experts from outside our school system. Publishers sent representatives to more thoroughly explain not only what we could see by looking at the textbook, but also what resources were available online and what type of professional development would be provided by the publisher. After each presentation, the group would discuss what we had just learned and again complete a review sheet rating each text. It made no difference whether the committee member was a teacher, a parent, or outside consultant. All opinions were equally important and validated. During the third phase, the top-two resources were critically analyzed for curriculum alignment. Dr. Rasmussen, the other two Math Resource Specialists and I, looked for each unit and standard and ranked the publisher's alignment. This information helped us better understand which resource best fit our needs. Dr. Rasmussen?
This next phase actually we go into the data that we collected for the different resources. So part of the sub-part are actually, first part, we're actually looking at the data that we collected for the middle-school resource. Now for these, for this data we collected, we actually rated the resources from one to four, where one is the lowest and four was the highest. So if we actually, we also looked at the different aspects, then grouped all these attributes into four different categories. We looked at instructional support, differentiation, assessment, and data analysis, and skill practice. From the feedback that were received from the parents, we then broke down, from the five resources, we broke it down to the top three. So if we looked at here, the data we collected for Galenclow Math, Math in Focus, and Big Ideas. So from rating from, again, from reminding you from a rating, high rating of four to a low rating of one, we then were able to analyze the strengths and weaknesses for all the different resources. So if you're going through all the different resources in terms of instructional support, differentiation, assessment, and data analysis, skill practice, and from there, we gave an overall resource rating from all these different attributes. From this information, we were able to then to identify which one was the highest two resources. Based off this information, we actually identified that the Galenclow Math and the Big Ideas were the highest two resources. From this information, then we were then to identify which one of these highest two resources would best align with our curriculum. So from this data, Big Ideas actually best supported our curriculum. Again, this was a rating from one to four. So we're looking at the Big Ideas. The pre-algebra, if you actually note up here, actually, I did put a footnote here, the pre-algebra evaluation was updated very recently due to what we just received last week, an advanced copy of their new Advanced II textbook for the Big Ideas. Based off this information from the resource review, we recommend the Big Ideas learning resource to support the implementation of the proposed Math VI Transition to Pre-Algebra, Math VII, Pre-Algebra VII, and the Pre-Algebra VIII curriculum. The next aspect that we turn, issues now for the high-school resources. Looking, we did the same, kind of the same protocol and same procedure. We looked at, again, rated from one to four, four being the highest for all the four different kind of rating areas in terms of instructional support. So we looked at the discovery, the highest three ratings were Discovering Algebra and Geometry, the Pearson Common Core, and the College Prep Math and we call it Core Connections. From this information, so we determined we had to rate what are the, based off of these strengths and weaknesses of all the different resources. So for rating these different resources, as I go through, each one of these has a strength and weakness. And then from here, we give an overall score. Based off this information, we actually rated that the highest two resources were Discover, the Discovering Series for Algebra and Geometry and the Pearson Common Core. Also part of the, the additional data that we've been collecting on the CPM, and also stakeholder feedback. Analysis of the grade distributions at both the middle-school and high-school has illustrated that students are learning. For example, in the eighth grade, student distribution of grades has improved in both the first quarter and second quarter from the prior year, while at the high school, the distribution has been maintained. In terms of individual achievement, on the midterm, the high-school algebra class performed statistically the same on identical problems compared to last-year's students. As for the eighth grade, the average on the midterm for what some eighth-grade teachers considered to be a more rigorous test than the prior year was an 87 percent. Another aspect of CPN was the parents' and student survey back in February. We asked feedback on the use of small groups, and the feedback was split. As noted, 51 percent of the students believe working small groups helped them stay engaged. Additionally, 72 percent of students provide the additional individual or group feedback during the lesson. However, in terms of parent feedback, 46 percent of students believe their students' confidence improved in math. Lastly, parents felt that online homework did not allow them to help their students at home. CPM does have its positives and negatives. The use of this extensive pilot was useful in helping the district make this decision. It was from this feedback and data that CPM resource was eliminated from consideration for adoption to implement the proposed curriculum. Similar to what we did at the middle-school, we then took the highest two resources, determined their alignment to our drafted curriculum. The Pearson Common Core and Discovery, actually, we actually go for the different units, for the different courses, Math 8, 12, and also Geometry. Based upon this information, we actually consider the Pearson Common Core resource better aligned to our curricular needs. Based off the feedback and also the data collected, the district recommends the Pearson Common Core Algebra and Geometry as a resource to support the implementation of the proposed curriculum. From here, we actually then have to start planning out our next steps. Upon approval from the board, the next steps begin towards implementing the curriculum. We have planned to have teachers work this summer on building implementation guides and assessments. These documents help provide teachers with proper guidance to what sections are taught and when, and the common assessments needed to measure student progress. We'll also be scheduling professional development for teachers in, A, how to use the features of the proposed resources, and the instructional model used to teach with the mathematical practices identified in the Common Core State Standards. This professional development aspect will be vital in the success of the proposed curriculum. As noted on the last slides, common assessments will be built off the proposed curriculum documents by teachers. These assessments will build in the evaluation of the curriculum. Additionally, after the administration of the Sback assessment during the, beginning in the 2014-15 school year, we receive external data on our learning strengths and weaknesses. Additionally, we will also use observations to help evaluate the proposed curriculum. Observations by administrators, both district and building level, will help evaluate the implementation of the written curriculum. Also, observations by peers will help teachers be provided with feedback with various lessons. From here, I'll actually turn it over to Dr. Boyce to actually talk about the anticipated costs to the district.
When we add up the students who will be impacted by this proposed curriculum and resource purchase, there are 3,775 students across nine different courses. The cost for the middle-school for the Big Ideas resources is $171,000. The high-school cost that includes Algebra I and Geometry is $109,000. And summer work that Paul just outlined would come from the implementation account, $19,400, for a total approximate cost of $294,000, or about $74 per student. If you look at the cost of the resources, the money to purchase the textbooks would come from the current budget, about $160,000, and next year's budget, $120,000. Thank you very much for your attention during our presentation. This concludes our presentation.
So I would invite board members to get up, well, everybody that's supposed to be at the table, go on up to the table. And if somebody can get the screen up and the spotlight off, that would be helpful. And then we'll reconvene and go into the evening. While everybody is getting situated, I'll thank Dr. Boyce and all of the staff who presented tonight. It's been an excellent presentation, similar to the other math presentation that we have had, and it certainly shows that you've done a great deal of work and research in getting us ready for what is an important task for every school district in Connecticut, and that is adopting our, adapting our curriculum for the Common Core standards. I was especially impressed with the very nice way that you said, here's the current content that is similar to the old content, and here's where the new one will be. For the purpose of questions, probably it would be good to address all questions to either our two presenters down there through the chair, if you will, and then if Dr. Tidal wants to step in, or if the two of you think that a teacher might be better presenting or answering that question, then you could call the appropriate person up. So we're available for questions for board members, and who would like to go first? Mr. Convatito?
Through the chair. And I guess it is, one, two, three, the fifth slide in the PowerPoint, Why Was Curriculum Revised? And I'm always, usually the first question I ask, but I just want some clarity on it. My understanding is that in reviewing of the CMTs, the SATs, and the CAPS, along with the Common Core standards and the Sback assessments, you were able to identify where the current curriculum needed help? I'm just asking for clarification on that.
Yes, we were able to identify based off, especially where we have the ramping up of the, especially the, all the different areas. You look at the approximating measures, that's a very identified area need across our middle school. And you can really identify when we're putting this into our new curriculum, the ramping up of the geometry standards would help identify that and also address that area of need.
Okay. So, and again, along Chairman Dwyer's comments about what was similar about the old curriculum and the new curriculum, I found that very helpful from a presentation point of view. Going towards, my biggest question of this, and again, with the, from the whole revamp of the math curriculum, is I see this persistent shift of downward in grade level of higher understandings, okay? My concern, and again, if any of the teachers or resource people want to chime in on this, how do you, I mean, to me, it would seem it takes you three years to implement this curriculum only because you're shifting certain things from eighth grade to sixth-grade levels and so forth. How do you do that so that that sixth grader, that current sixth grader now doesn't lose out in seventh grade? And I mean, if next year's sixth graders, I assume we're going to be where this year's seventh graders are, okay? And next year's fifth graders are going to be where this year's sixth graders are in some, and in some of these strands, seventh grade. How do you implement that, okay? So you don't, one, lose the kid and just not all over the place with the curriculum?
That is also an excellent question. That is something that we have really, at the department level, have been really talking about for a long period of time. We kind of, we've actually started then, I find, okay, what is the essential that we can actually start kind of maybe weaving in now to help the transition for our students so they can be successful when we go, when we transition to our new curriculum? I mean, so we are preparing for this in terms of, okay, what we added into our current units of study to help them prepare for our upcoming years.
If I may, through the chair, just to follow up on that. It seems to me with counting the additional strands and the shift that we won't see the actual fruition of this curriculum for three, possibly four, years. Am I looking at that in the right framework?
Right. Math, being a cumulative subject, does build year upon year. And what happened when the Common Core standards were designed is they made the most dramatic changes in the middle-school years and in Algebra II. And so, yes, we're well aware of the fact that we're going to have to provide a tremendous amount of support for students and teachers and be flexible in how we will help them continue to be successful through the different grades. The value of our math resource teachers in each middle-school will be extremely important because they are the ones who will be in there helping teachers, working with small groups of students, and providing that additional support for students who need it. And Paul and I and the school administrators will be spending a tremendous amount of time in classrooms observing the progress, which is a very important step in monitoring the implementation of the curriculum. We'll be asking for feedback from teachers to find out where they're struggling, where the kids are struggling, and we'll address it as we go. But we're going to be watching this very carefully in starting in September.
I love the curriculum. I think it's extremely ambitious, and, you know, I'm not opposed to ambitious things. My last question is, on your matrix for resource material, that was on a one-to-four basis? Okay? And I'm always a guy who likes to get to the four. Is there going to be additional resources to fill in those gaps? Understanding that no single resource will get you to the four, but where are we planning on those additional resources?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's always a continual search as we look for, I mean, as we start to implement our curriculum, we'll identify what are our strengths and weaknesses and areas of need. So I mean, I think that's always a constant area of improvement as we help, as we help develop the curriculum, not just for next year, but beyond that. There's other different areas on the NCTM website that actually we can help, kind of help, kind of supplement our different resources that we are looking to adopt.
If I could just add to that, one of the features of the Pearson book that I found extremely impressive was the online resources. And both books have online resources. So both books provide teachers with ways of supporting both struggling learners and advanced learners. What's available online is tremendous. But Pearson in particular is known for the wealth of support online, and they even have a way of teachers designing benchmark tests that students can take online where the results can then be uploaded into Infinite Campus, our new student information system. So that really, I thought, was a very positive component of that that really will help us supplement the textbook itself. The textbook alone will, you know, will need supplementing, and the teachers will have all the resources at their disposal as part of the textbook purchase.
You have one more question?
Just one more on it. Actually, I just wanted to thank the committee and the people that participated in it. And I just can't find out where my slide rule goes in any of these slides.
Next to your abacus.
Actually, in your problems, I wanted you to solve the problem of how to get 500 cubic feet of suitcases in 100 cubic feet, you know... feet of suitcases and 100 cubic feet, you know, trunk, because I've never been able to solve that. Do we have other questions over, Mrs. Carey, and then Mrs. Gerber?
Just to follow on to Mr. Confortino's question, similar question, asked a different way, I think. We've got students in seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade. They've learned a certain way for the last eight or nine years. And now we're going to shift to a completely different way. So, two parts. One is, might it make sense to start them at a certain level and flush out the kids we have and the system we have, seeing that they've followed a certain method for a number of years? Or if not, how do we make this change without risk throwing them in the deep end of the pool?
Just to clarify, are you asking us about the instructional method?
Instructional method. So we're going from, you know, into this group learning method, and just going back to my question from K through two, does it make sense, at least as we understand it, to start and work our way up? So that's not what we're going to be able to do here with a Common Core. How do we supplement for that?
We're continuing the instructional method that's used K through five, so that what the children are experiencing in the elementary school is the same instructional method that they are experiencing in the middle and into the high school. There is, you know, I would expect teachers to use a variety of instructional methods in the classroom. Group work is a very important part of how students learn. They need to be able to talk about math. They need to be able to express their thoughts and explain what they're thinking. But there's a place for group work, there's a place for direct instruction, there's a place for paired work, and our teachers will be, are also very good at using a variety of instructional strategies, and will continue to support them as they do it. When you have the opportunity to look at the textbooks, what you'll see in the Big Ideas books, for example, is that every lesson has three or four suggestions for teachers that says, have students work together on this, and they can be working together in pairs, in groups, or even individually if the teacher wants to. So the books are set up so that teachers will be able to use the instructional model quite easily. But from what we have seen, the students adapt quite readily to working in a variety of ways because they're used to doing that in other subject areas.
And my other question, just to the calculation on the costs, particularly in the high school, is that calculation get us into next year, or does that account for the growth in our high school students over the next several years?
When I use the numbers, I added, I added a few because I knew there was a growth, so I believe it's an accurate number, and it includes the numbers that we'll need, certainly for next year, the number, the most accurate numbers I had.
So the same question, asked a different way. Will we anticipate that we'll be buying more high school books two years from now and three years from now to accommodate the additional enrollment, or are we buying them all now?
It's, I certainly wouldn't say we wouldn't be buying more. We, next year, we will be bringing you the Algebra II and above curriculum with resource recommendations as well. And so it's certainly possible that we will have to add to the Algebra I and Geometry inventory, but right now, we're using the best numbers we have for next year.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gerber, and then Mr. Lou.
Mr. Carey kind of addressed the question. I guess just, again, to touch on the whole small group learning, because obviously in the past year, that was something that people had concerns with. So it sounds like now what we're looking towards is more of a mix. It's not exclusively or predominantly small groups, but different aspects of teaching. So that's, that's the direction we're going in with this coming.
I think one, one very big advantage of using CPM, which is a book I will say I loved, I was a math teacher, I would have enjoyed using it. But we discovered over the past year that it had some drawbacks, and we got very specific feedback on that. One was the lack of specific examples, and another was, I think it didn't look like a math book to a lot of parents, and so, you know, using it at home with their children was difficult for them. But our teachers were able to experience a very strong model of instruction in using group work. And now I believe they feel very confident about implementing that model based on their own judgment. When is the best time to use group work? When is the best time for direct instruction? And they know what to use when, and I trust them in their judgment. But I think as a result, their instructional skills have gotten much stronger.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I guess because one of the things that we heard on the negative side with the CPM was that there was a certain amount of rigidity, and it sounds like this moving forward, there's a little more fluidity with it, so. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lou, and then Mr. Fadavine.
Thank you. Through the chair to Dr. Boyce. Since we're talking about the CPM textbook, so it's gone, is that correct? We're not going to be using it in any supplemental way, shape, or form?
That's correct.
And I know we discussed, the last time we were discussing the secondary math curriculum, that it costs the district $13,000. How much did this review process cost?
Didn't cost us anything.
So this one didn't cost?
I guess maybe we had to pay substitutes for teachers around the committee.
I guess then, through chair to Dr. Tidal, how, why would one cost so much and another cost less? In fact, it seems like we reviewed three, or three textbooks here, or maybe more, and it's costing us nothing, but CPM cost us $13,000. Well, because the review was done completely differently, right? So last spring, CPM was chosen for essentially, for lack of a better word, a full pilot. And so to basically get the books for a year on loan, enough for every student, and to get the professional development with that, that's what it cost. And then at the end of the year, as you know, basically they were loners, and they go back to the company. This review process, basically, textbook publishers will always loan you a certain number of books at no charge as part of their normal operations to review them. So it was really a different review process, and that's why it had different, different costs. Sometimes, if you want to pilot, a publisher will give you a class set, but I don't think there's any publisher that will give you, you know, 800 books to pilot. So it really was two different review processes, and this particular review process didn't cost the district anything in terms of the textbooks.
And if I, can I clarify if I can? The, the training involved how many days of training that that textbook company provided resource?
They both, they provided, what are the, six days of training throughout the year, and also visitations into different classrooms to provide them.
So there's some value to that training that is the other companies didn't have to do. Mr. Lou, did you have other questions?
The parents also rated these textbooks, is that correct? Can we see those ratings and how they added up as well? Thank you. Mr. Confortino talked a little bit about the supplements. So you don't have all the supplements yet for the spaces that are not to your liking in these textbooks, is that correct?
Some of it will come from the online resources. Some of what will happen this summer, when the teachers work on the implementation guides, is as they really delve into each unit very deeply, if they find that the textbook doesn't provide enough, for example, we can look online, and Paul mentioned, NCTM, National Council of Teachers' Mathematics, has extensive free resources that would provide an excellent way to supplement this. I firmly believe we can supplement it without any additional cost.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Fadavine.
First, I'd just likely quickly thank you for your committee or group's presentation. I think it was well presented and understandable. However, I have questions. In your presentation, you identified the similar content with respect to the current curriculum, as well as some move content, it was moved between grade levels, as well as added content. And I guess the question I have is that you didn't identify, and I'm not sure it exists, but any remove content? Is there any remove content?
I mean, there is, I would actually classify very minimal remove content, especially at the middle school level. I don't think I remember any content that had actually been removed at the middle school level. A few small topics in our, we've looked at it, geometry, bigger that actually, that we have seen that actually we found that did not align with any things that were going on beyond what we were, we needed in our higher classes.
Okay. And I guess the other, I guess, statement, I guess, I would make is more of a statement. In the Common Core and the Standards of Mathematical Practice, they list eight standards. And of those eight standards, I would only equate one directly to collaborative learning, in a sense. And that one is number three, construct viable arguments and critiques the reasoning of others. The other seven are more substantive related to the understanding of math, I guess. So I just wanted to make that as a observation, because a lot has been discussed whether or not, what the Common Core standards are, and how the current curriculum is going to be influenced, the Common Core. And the Common Core standards do have an aspect or component of constructing viable arguments and critiquing the reasoning of others.
Any commentary that you want to make? If not, will Mrs. Maxon-Canelli?
I reiterate what the other board members have said in terms of thank you to all those who participated in this rigorous process. I've always tried to wait for other people's questions so I could cross off some of mine. It didn't work, now it never does. One, you mentioned the online resources. Will that involve any online homework?
I mean, I, I don't, to my knowledge, no.
I'm not saying that would be a good thing if it did, so.
No, I mean, that would actually be up to the teacher, but based off of the resource we were looking at, it doesn't say just all homework online, no.
Maybe I should clarify. When I mentioned online resources, what NCTM has in a website called Illuminations are lesson plans and other activities that teachers can download. Some are used with an interactive whiteboard, for example. Some are worksheets, you know, so they're, if a teacher was looking to supplement what was in the textbook, the teacher could download those and use them in the classroom, but we're not looking at online homework.
One question, this is sort of out of curiosity. There were mentions in Dr. Boyce in your memo regarding how these textbooks are aligned to the Common Core, and I couldn't help but wonder, why is it that these higher level math courses seem to be ready for the Common Core, whereas that was obviously a glaring issue with our K through five? So is it, and I ask that meaning, are these really Common Core aligned since K through five isn't ready for this at all, or are we looking possibly at new textbooks again as they suddenly get updated?
Right. No, I don't think we're looking at new textbooks. But if I could talk a little bit about each one. The Big Ideas, you probably noticed, has a 2014 copyright date, which means it's hot off the press. It existed in a different form prior to this, and they completely reconstructed the book, so it is aligned to the Common Core. And I was kind of excited about the book because one of the authors, Larson, is well-known in the, as a textbook author. He's a professor at Penn State, and he has always written high school books. I think we use some of his books in our higher math courses, but this is the first time he's written a middle school book, and he partnered with a middle school teacher from, I believe, New Hampshire to write this book. So I think it's one of the best math series I have seen, and I've seen a lot of math series. The Pearson Common Core was not taken down and rebuilt from scratch, however, it does thoroughly include the references to the Common Core, and I feel very comfortable that we'll be using it, you know, throughout this adoption cycle without any concerns. We talked a lot among ourselves about, you know, why we were finding these materials, because I wondered the same thing, actually. I think that textbook publishers know that, how important it is, first of all, for secondary students to use a math textbook as they, as we prepare students to go on to higher education. One of the things we want to make sure they can do is read and understand a textbook, because they will be doing that when they go to college. So I think there is a great deal of emphasis among publishers in terms of getting the math textbooks out there at the middle and high school level. And we just don't have the variety of resources that the elementary has. You know, when you look at what a math teacher uses, they use their textbook and they use online resources, and, you know, I used to pull from other sources when I was teaching, but there isn't anywhere near the range of resources that we find at the elementary level.
We've talked frequently at the board about parents needing resources in order to help, and I noticed in the, in the Pearson that you, it's hard to read in this light, I know it was in the linear modeling and quadratic functions units, that Pearson was lacking or not aligned well, I'm not sure which. And so I was wondering, what would you be using to supplement that, and in what form would parents be able to access it to help at home?
I think that's, I think the Pearson resource actually provides enough examples for the, for parents to actually see how to graph a quadratic, how to kind of factor different forms, and then to go into the different forms into how to graph in vertex form. I don't know if you want, don't worry about the specifics of those. But from there, we're more looking at, what about the instructional kind of tasks that would align into the curriculum? That's what we're looking at. We would have to actually maybe access more, say, the NCTM Illumination kind of lessons to help supplement into there, but that we felt the resource had enough examples for parents and also students so they can follow at home.
Okay. So you're not, it's not that you're needing to go back to old textbooks and Xerox and kind of thing? Okay. Hold on. Oh, very important for all of this evaluation, because this is obviously a tumultuous time, is what, what is your idea about the assessments that are going to be used? Not only to have an idea, hopefully in advance, of the smarter balanced tests, but to check how we're doing across the strands? I mean, what are the benchmarks that we're going to be able to count on, you know, measuring against how the teachers are doing it now? What assessments?
Well, that really goes into, I think, our plan from, upon approval. I mean, we have our plan to start building common assessments, so that we, down to maybe we've looked at unit assessments or common tasks, to really kind of help identify and help track student progress. So, I mean, we're looking at a number of different avenues, performance tasks, performance-based assessments, or maybe even down to maybe some unit assessments that are all common, then we can actually then, the teachers could then come back, sit and talk about what are the learning strengths from the, that are, that were identified along the way, and then we build off of those, and then we can do our data, with our new Infinite Campus, we can help track that information along.
Sorry, I think I've got this about all of them. Oh, this, just out of curiosity, because we heard so much about this with the elementary school curriculum, and I especially thought of it with the picture of the truck with the cubes needing to be put in there. You know, we've been talking so much, the elementary school language, of going from concrete to pictorial to abstract, and all the differentiation required of teachers. And I was wondering, is this now reaching the point where it's becoming a little bit more standardized in terms of how the students are taught, or is that, there that still, you're going to have one kid who's trying to picture the cubes, and others are going right to the, you know, underlying math of it? You know, how much of that is forming the instruction?
Well, I think that actually informs instruction a great deal. I mean, we actually, we want to encourage all different ways of thinking throughout all these problems. There, if you look at this truck problem, there wasn't just one way to solve this. I mean, you could have, like a kid, actually kind of visually look at the cubes and like, okay, how many fit this way, how many fit that way, then figure out from that, from that aspect. So, I mean, we want to encourage all different ways of thinking, not just, okay, just one way, like, as I showed, just kind of step by step, more of an algebraic approach, because that's how I thought about this problem. But again, we want to encourage that whole differentiation of those, that multiple intelligences for all students to understand the problem.
Because you did mention the most, coming up with the most efficient way to solve a problem, and actually, this I don't know, to what, the smarter balanced test is timed, correct?
Yes.
So that could be an issue in terms of student success on that. Finally, one thing that was mentioned in the curriculum, or I don't remember which documents, which not too many board members have been hearing about, is the Capstone Project. And I was wondering if you could introduce that a little bit?
I think that is something that we want to really build in, in terms of our, say, like, the 21st century skills. To really kind of encapsulate everything we've learned in our geometry curriculum. We don't have that set yet, we haven't actually gone out and actually planned with the Capstone Project, and that'll go into, again, our summer kind of research and action. But that is something that we feel, in terms of really driving everything together and actually to help students kind of show their understanding from all the different topics they've learned throughout the year.
Okay. Last question, where are we going beyond the Common Core?
We are going to go on a Common Core. We are going beyond the Common Core, I think, in a number of different areas. First of all, we actually went against the Common Core recommendation. The Common Core actually states specifically not to split kids in grade six. We actually decided to keep our current structure and actually, and help keep that structure in terms of where we actually can start the kids on the progression. We actually do, we're actually going to be doing four years of math and three years at the middle school, to get the students starting in sixth grade through algebra and eighth grade. So that is an example of, we are above the Common Core there. And number two, we actually can show in our geometry, we actually kept the number of standards into our geometry curriculum. You actually can go into our geometry, we actually, we noted as, we kept the same kind of, kind of, structure of how they titled it, but we actually put Fairfield next to it. So actually, again, we show we had additional standards actually added into, for example, our 21 course.
Thank you. Any other questions from any other board members at the moment? We, of course, when it's on the agenda, next, May 21st, there will be time for additional questions at that time. I'm understanding at the moment that Mr. Lou has asked for some specific information on parent feedback, but I don't know that I heard any other request for information other than what you have in the packet, is that correct? Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the teachers and the other staff members and the parents involved in this, this incredibly time-consuming, extensive process. And thank you all for doing that and being the teacher leaders. I think actually, you would have, on the next meeting, two motions. One would be with respect to the curriculum, and the second would be with respect to the textbooks. We would do them as two separate motions, so if you see it that way on the agenda, that's purposeful.
Okay. Moving on to the next topic, which is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 9th. The recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 9th, 2013. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Iacono is seconding it. Any questions on the minutes? Any comments on the minutes? Okay, all, whoop.
Sorry. I did have one quick question on the second page of the minutes, only because these are the things that'll come back to us later. At the very bottom of the minutes on page two, and Mr. Convertito, this involves you, last two and a half lines, a doctor title stated that the district gives the same assessments, but depending on the needs of the schools, teachers may or may not use these assessments, that there is a consistency in the district regarding testing. Does that seem contradictory to anybody else? And I mean, we're just, we're asking the leaders of the math department regarding, you know, which assessments are we using, how are we holding people accountable? And so I was unclear on this part of the conversation.
Yeah, I think it may not be captured there precisely, but this was with respect to the teacher evaluation plan discussion that we had.
Right.
We have a, like, for example, at the elementary level, we have the same assessments given at the same time throughout the elementary schools. But in the forming of their individual goals, teachers may or may not use those, all of those assessments. That would be an individual decision. So it's, it may not use those assessments in the teacher evaluation plan, not use them in their instruction. Correct? So that's perhaps what's misleading about that. Yeah, thank you for that.
Clarification, but no change? Any other comments? If not, everybody in favor, raise your hand. I have a unanimous vote, so the minutes are passed. And, so we're up to student reports. The first question is, how's preparations for the prom going?
Preparations are going very well. Marco couldn't be here because of a AP test, so I'm alone tonight. But for Ludlow, we have a lot of exciting things happening. Our spring sports are going really well this season, and notably, girls tennis, they're 12-2 this season. They beat Wettill today. Boys baseball beat Ward, and so did softball. So we're really proud of all our sports. I know lacrosse just had a game, I don't know the result, but boys lacrosse is just playing out there. And then, for preparations for the prom, there's the mock crash for juniors. It's something we do every year to talk about drunk driving and the effects of that. And it's really, although my class never got to see it because it rained, we, like, it's incredible, like, it really makes an impact on us, and I know everyone really enjoys that. Also, the play was here the past, this past weekend, and that was very big success, was Oliver, and I know the cast had a great time doing it. Also, May 1st just passed, which was the college deadline, so now Ludlow is filled with, like, college gear, and everyone's really excited. Although it's bittersweet, we're all excited to be leaving, the seniors. AP tests have begun, so it's our, like, last little hurdle, I guess, to the end of the year. That's why Marco isn't here, as I said. So we're really excited for those to be over, although they just started. We're excited. And we've had some really great experiences in the past few weeks. The French and the Spanish students have come, which I know we talked about, the Spain trip that Marco is also on, he seems to be missing a lot today. But there were incredible bonds formed. We all got to meet all the Spanish students, we all talked to them in our classes, was really fun having them, and it was a once-in-a-lifetime experience. Also, the Virginia trip just happened with all the, it was orchestra, chorus, and band, and they competed in Williamsburg, and all ensembles won an award for their performances. And they got to spend the day at Busch Gardens, so that was exciting. I'm sure they had fun. I missed out on it. But, so yeah, that's really what's going on at Ludlow right now.
Any questions for our Ludlow representative? For the audience that may not be getting the reference, inside joke reference to the prom, for those of you who were not here at the meeting, after the student report, her partner in this student report, Marco, turned and asked her to the prom. And Jerry, I sincerely hope that you have provided a tape of that event to them. Representatives from Ward.
Hi. Okay, so, a little bit that's going on with our clubs. Our student forum is in the middle of organizing our Battle of the Houses, that's happening on May 17th. And the Interact Club just put on the Harmony for Hurricane Sandy Benefit Concert, where it's kind of like a talent show where everyone can come out and see the talent at Ward, and all the proceeds go to, go to a relief fund for Hurricane Sandy. I thought it was a great success. I went, I loved it. And then relating that to our music department, we also just went on a trip to Virginia Beach and competed in a music festival. The choir won first in their class, orchestra won first in their class and first overall, and band won first in their class and first overall. So we were all really excited about that, came out and had a really good time at Busch Gardens, as well as Ludlow, and got to see a really cool military tattoo concert in Virginia, and thought it was a really great experience, and I had a really good time. DeeDee?
Hi, everyone. Good evening, board. I would just like to contribute to the protest, if you will, on the budget cut before I update you on the academics and sports. As you know, I'm a former music contributor. I just want to say, the music department is a huge icon for local schools, both elementary, middle, and high school. The department depends on a budget to help kids excel, participate within the community, just goes beyond and above. So the budget cut would not only, you know, hurt a lot of potential opportunity for kids pursuing music, but as well as their extracurricular involvement. So, I mean, just wanted to say that, please consider. So as for academics, the start of the fourth quarter has begun. May 1st was the commitment day for seniors, as Alice said, so Ward and Ludlow share that. AP exams are underway, I know they happened this week and continue throughout next week. And our final exams are just posted for classes. For sports, Ward lost against Ludlow in the baseball, the varsity baseball game, sorry. And the Fairfield boys volleyball qualified for state. Records, 10-2. Our girls track team won against Wilton, and our girls lacrosse is 7-5, and their state is coming up. And that's the update for Ward.
Any questions for our Ward representatives? No? As usual, you are welcome to stay, especially if you have comments on the teacher evaluation business item that is coming up, or you're welcome to head off and go about your daily Any committee or liaison reports that board members wish to give at the moment? We'll be hearing about Riverfield later on. Anything else going on? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I just wanted to say for Parks and Rec, that I went to the ribbon cutting for the new softball field, and it was really a fantastic event. It seems like it's been a work in progress for so long, but the field looks wonderful. They were talking about, I want to say, like, over 300 girls are playing softball now. I mean, it's just a great community experience. There were tons of Fairfield Public School students there from, they just started a new T-ball team for the kindergartners, and it goes all the way up into eighth grade. So if you haven't been up there, I suggest you check it out, it's really nice, it's right by the driving range. So that was it from Parks and Rec.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, the superintendent's report.
Just one quick thing, this is a follow-up to our, one of the initiatives we put in place immediately after Sandy Hook, which, as you recall, took place in December. One of the interim security measures we put in place was to lock the doors at the elementary and middle schools, and we put a doorbell on them. That was always considered to be an interim measure while we evaluated the sort of full implementation of the buzzer, buzz-in system with this camera and the intercom project. And I'm pleased to report that's been completed, so all elementary schools and middle schools now have state-of-the-art camera, buzz-in, intercom system that's accessible from the secretaries. And they no longer have to get up every time the bell rings to let people in. We'll be looking at additional security measures, potentially to go in place in the spring and summer. I'm working with the police department on that, and as we roll those out, I'll keep you posted. So I just wanted to point that out, that we've made good progress on that.
And do we have a date that we think the chief of police may have been able to complete his report?
They're really thinking it would be the end of the fiscal year. I'm not sure we're going to have anything, although he's willing to come back if the board would like him to, for any kind of update prior to the completion of the report, or we could have him come back once the report is complete. Some of the information, obviously, is sensitive, we have to evaluate whether we'd have that in closed session or open session. So it's really something we can discuss going forward, but he's available for an update whenever the board desires.
Mrs. Canelli?
Just to follow up on that through the chair to Dr. Title. Now, that was both a, as they were checking out every single school so that they could figure out, so when they come back, is it going to be a summary of what hap, of the situation of each school, or is it going to be the next step of how will Fairfield Police coordinate with us? Because obviously, whatever plan he was in the middle of constructing has now been dealt quite a blow with the budget cut.
Right. Yeah, they're really two related but independent studies. They're studying the physical infrastructure of every building, looking for places where we can make a structural improvement through signage or some other mechanisms. And that is very painstaking process, particularly our larger schools, that are several, you know, that take a long time to go through. Separate from that, I've not had any more conversations with him about what human resources he might be able to bring to the table next year, given the budget cut that he sustained. So we'll sort of have to go back to the drawing board on that, and perhaps when he comes back to the board, we could ask about, you know, what his thoughts are on that, given the fiscal situation. It could be very easily that, you know, he would like to roll that back out and give it a shot again, that was still the right plan, it just wasn't funded. So there's two separate things, the human resource part of it and the physical infrastructure part of it, that is sort of going on simultaneously.
Mr. Convertito?
Just sort of a follow-up on that. We have two building projects, I guess we're going to, probably presented to us the next couple of months, we've accepted Sherman and Stratfield. And I'm just curious if there's anything that was value engineered out of those, if we got a list of that before we even looked to accept those projects.
Right.
Given the problem that we're having with the Osborne annex and the Sherman annex, I just want to make sure that there's no issues with those, and so-
Yeah, which is-
If we can get what we originally asked for, what was value engineered out, and so we know where we stand on those two projects.
Sure.
Thanks.
Not a problem.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Mr. Lou?
Thank you. I didn't know if you wanted this now or during open comment, but we received a-
Mr. Lou, the, we normally try and talk about the items that he's talked about, and then if you wanted, if this is a different topic, then open board comment probably would be the good time for it. Thank you. Any other comments on the topics that the superintendent has addressed? If not, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is approval of the Fairfield teacher-administrator evaluation plans, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the submission of the Fairfield teacher evaluation plan, the Fairfield administrator evaluation plan, and the alternative implementation plan to the Connecticut State Department of Education. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Iacono and Mrs. Gerber?
Mrs. Leffert is here.
The information was, of course, provided at its first reading at the last meeting, so I presume that you have that with you. And Mrs. Leffert is here to respond to any questions, but I don't know whether you have any opening comments that you wish to make.
I do have a few comments, if I can circle back around to just a few key points. I'm just going to go back to where we started on this, June 2012, the Connecticut guidelines were approved and adopted to move forward with our evaluation plans and what the requirements were with those plans. And what those guidelines told us was that we had to have, two things we had to pay attention to. One, we had to have a committee process in place that included teachers and administrators. And then our plan had to be consistent with the model guidelines which would be adopted by the State Department of Education. So you see those model guidelines in the seed evaluation plan, which was the state pilot that's been running for this past year in 10 districts. So we identified 21 decision points, as I told you back in the presentation last month, within that guidelines rubric. We really had 21 points where we had to decide as a committee where we were going to go and make decisions. We worked as subcommittees and then as a full committee on this for a number of months. We had a lot of rigorous, deep conversation that led us to agreement on all 21 points, on all 21 of those decision points. I appreciate the questions that I had from some of you after the presentation last month, and I provided information that I could. I understood that there were some questions about parent and student feedback that some of you brought to the table, so I'll talk a little bit about that. During the process of our committee, we had a choice on the parent feedback between parent or peer feedback. We chose as a committee to go down the road of parent feedback, we felt that it was very important to have that, and if you recall, that's the 10% of the teacher evaluation plan, and there's 10% of stakeholder feedback in the administration plan. Since the school climate survey data came back, the school teams have just been beginning their work, and while the state, at this point, is not looking to what our, what survey we use, we, as a committee, felt there's some rich data there that will serve as a baseline for us to start for the first year of our teacher evaluation plan. We have a very rigorous plan with a lot of parts to it, that we have to get information out to administrators, they need to be calibrated on our new system, we have a whole new rubric that we're looking at, the Marzano rubric, which is different from the CCT, the Common Core of Teaching that we have in Connecticut, it's aligned to the CCT, but we feel that the Marzano rubric really gives teachers more meat to understand what good instruction looks like, how they can implement it, and what administrators need to look for in the classroom. So we have a lot of work to do there. We felt with having the school climate data for this first year, again, gives us a starting off point to then make decisions regarding the following year, what our survey will look like for parents. As far as student feedback, we had a choice there, that's a 5% part of the teacher- As far as student feedback, we had a choice there, that's a 5% part of the teacher evaluation plan. We had a choice there of using student feedback or a whole-school learning indicator. We had a lot of discussion about that within our committee. We decided to focus on the whole-school learning indicator. That really, we felt, would unite the school team and really all teachers being responsible for student instruction and growth, not just those teachers that teach at a state-tested grade level or subject area. We felt that there are a lot of opportunities for student feedback. We looked at the school climate survey, which is certainly an opportunity for that. Infinite Campus offers students a way to provide feedback. Some teachers choose to do their own informal kinds of assessments at the end of the year, give students some surveys to take a peek at. We also know that the Administrator Evaluation Plan calls for stakeholder feedback, and at the building administrator level, they're going to be looking for feedback from parents, from students, and from staff. So that student piece is included there as well. Again, there are many new facets to this evaluation plan. We wanted to support the implementation, most importantly, of that teaching rubric, the Marzano rubric. It's, again, very rigorous. We feel that it's going to take us to the next level of instruction with our teachers, and that's a primary focus for our work going forward. Our goal is to improve instruction and then ultimately, school improvement. And using the parent feedback and the whole-school learning indicators, we feel is going to help teachers focus their instruction and focus strategies that they can involve parents and improve the culture and climate of the school. Our plan needs to be revisited every year. That's a requirement from the State Department of Education. We don't think that this is a static plan. We think it's going to be very dynamic. We have to have conversations going forward as our committee. We'll look for feedback from all stakeholders regarding the plan, and certainly, we'll be taking a look at it every single year. I wanted to let you know that Ann Pascoe was going to join me tonight. She's the teacher of our Fairfield Education Association, the president, sorry, of the Fairfield Education Association. And she had some comments that she wanted to share, but at the last minute was not able to be here. So if you'll indulge me for a moment, if I can read a short statement from Ann Pascoe. She writes, "During one of the first meetings of this committee, there was a feeling that this task was daunting. One could not help but ask, how could this group of people, coming from different grade levels, disciplines, and positions, ever agree on anything, let alone a plan with so many mandated guidelines? It became clear very quickly that the committee members had not come with personal agendas. All had one concern: developing a plan that met the state requirements was fair to teachers and supervisors, and most of all, doable. Whereas decision-making by consensus seemed an improbability at the outset, we were pleasantly surprised that such a process was possible. The first decision to be made was which model we would use. The unanimous decision to use the Marzano model came about after much good discussion. Most members did not start out with Marzano as the number-one choice, but as the dialogue continued, the committee members listened, weighed the pros and cons, and one by one, each member decided to use Marzano. This first important decision mutually arrived at set the tone for all subsequent decisions. A mutual respect for one another and a tolerance for diverse points of view are the main reasons this committee was able to develop this plan in a relatively short period of time. Teachers and administrators worked collaboratively, with the understanding we are all in this together. There was no coercion, no strong-arm tactics, no brow-beating. Whenever it was time to make a decision, the committee weighed the alternatives with a single mindset: what was best for all." And she asks at the end, "Please approve this plan tonight. There's not much time left in the school year for the rollout of this document to the certified staff. This is a very complex plan, so there needs to be ample time for orientation to the specifics of the process." We do, are working on a rollout process right now. I will tell you that after the meeting last month, I did contact the State Department of Education. They did give us an extension to submit our plan through tomorrow. So they're expecting our plan tomorrow. And with that, I will respond to any questions you might still have.
We had a number of questions at our first meeting, but are there additional questions? Any on this side? Mrs. Cannelli.
Obviously, I would have assumed that you'd be reevaluating each year.
Yes.
At any point, does that come back to the board?
We expect to advise the board, yes, of any changes that are made to the plan and have that discussion going forward. What came about, I think we've talked about this, originally, there was not a consideration for Board of Education approval for the plan, and that's what we heard from Esther back in January or February, and she came here. What changed the board's mind, sorry, the State Department of Ed's mind, was that they were hearing from some districts that there was a top-down edict, this is what we're doing. We're doing the seed plan, or we're going to put this in place. And so some districts felt they were handcuffed and did not have input in their plan from the folks who were going to have to live and breathe that plan, which was their teachers and administrators. So the late date of March 13th is when we received the notification that we had to bring this to the board. And I spoke to Sarah Barzy, and she's at the State Department of Ed and really leading this initiative on teacher and administrator evaluation. And her comment was that they want the Boards of Education to know a few things. Number one, that the process was done through committee, through very extensive work, and that there was agreement by the committee to go forward with the plans that are in front of you. I will, we are focusing on the teacher evaluation plan, but there's an administrator evaluation plan as well, where there was a separate subcommittee working on that plan. And I will tell you that in both plans, we had unanimous agreement from all members of both committees.
Do you mind if I-
No, sure. Mrs. Iacono.
Thank you for sharing that. If you could, in your conversations, maybe just mention that I'm glad they gave us that feedback, but one of the really big reasons that the Boards of Education needs to know about this, which I raised when Esther was here, there are, despite their feelings up in Hartford, financial implications to this. And we controlled the budget string, so they left a big gaping hole when they said that they would just do it and make it happen and not bother to include the Board of Education. So if you wouldn't mind passing that along or sending me an email to someone where I could share that sentiment, I'd be happy to do so.
I could certainly talk with you afterwards if you'd like to share that with somebody. Thanks for your comment.
Thank you.
Cannelli, do you have other questions?
Yes. Go through which ones I need to. One thing in the document, and I'm sorry if I missed it, I noticed the appeal process, if a teacher, you know, to start this, doesn't agree with the goals process, et cetera, did that go all the way through to the final designation of the teacher label? Is that the same appeal process in that? Because that was a very extensive committee. I'm sorry, I'm not following your question.
I'll check that, and I'll ask you later.
Okay. Because now I'm thinking I may have misread it. Has there, this is actually through the chair to Dr. Tidal, has there been any additional thought about reducing the number of those who would be evaluated? Knowing that we have the freedom to only do a third, knowing what extensive work is involved is, you know, you were very open at the last meeting, that we were going well beyond the third. Are we still staying with those?
Yeah, actually, that was a committee decision, actually, to do that. Maybe you want to talk about that a little bit, Ann?
I will. We talked about multiple options. Number one, all staff members, all certified staff members going forward with the default from the state, which was implement the whole plan with everyone. We looked at the two options that the state provided, and we really thought, I'll use my word, I used last month, it's wonky, to try and manipulate which particular groups. And so we felt if we really focused on certified teachers, what the conversation that came up in our committee by administrators and teachers was, let's do all classroom teachers. We want to all be in this together. For the, if you notice, the implementation plan, if anyone needs a copy, let me know. I have copies here with me if you want to take a look at what our recommendation is for this. We listed a group of mostly student support specialists, and right now, the information is not clear from the state on how really to go about evaluating those folks. So we're going to have them as part of our professional learning as we roll this out, but they would be implemented, be evaluated fully by this new plan the following year, 14, 15.
Just one final question, which is simply, I just, I want to reiterate a point I made at the last meeting, which I'm, this does have so many moving parts. I think that this is about as manageable as it can get. But I know I am very interested in the idea of changing that idea of whole-school feedback with regard to input both from students and from parents. I think they have an awful lot to offer. It's at a small enough percentage, far outweighed by other aspects of the evaluation that no parent evaluation can do a teacher, and obviously, but it would involve a lot of work. It would involve tremendous teacher input. So I fully agree that that's not something that's ready for this year, but I do want to reiterate, I think that would be an important change. Thank you for that input.
Mr. Convatito.
You mentioned it's not a static plan, and it's up for review in a year. Is that, I just want some clarity on that. Is that reviewed by the central office or the board?
It's first by our committee. Our committee will be a standing committee, which actually will expand to include professional learning opportunities for teachers. As part of the regulations that came through in June, there's a requirement for looking at professional learning in a whole different way. And we're just ramping up that process right now with some of our directors at the central office to pull in our committee to take a look at that. So that committee will kind of morph into the Professional Learning Committee to guide the process during the year. What this requires us to do, which is a great plan, is to link teacher evaluation with professional learning. So where are teachers needing to, asking for more work? I need to know a little bit more about this. And how do I, maybe my building is doing professional learning on X, but I need professional learning on Y. Well, then, where is it in the district that we can link that teacher up with that particular learning plan? So it is something that we'll be looking each year, first through committee, and then the intention would be for us to present to you any changes prior to submission to the state. The state does expect us to review our plan every year.
Okay. And just as a follow-up on that, I too am not comfortable with the lack of direct input from stakeholders. And I guess it's how you frame the purpose of what this committee is to do. If administrators are going to be, and maybe it's because I'm a layperson, I never had a customer evaluate me, I always had a boss evaluate me. You may have gotten some customer feedback along the way. I have confidence that our administrators will be able to identify those areas of weakness within the facility, and with staff, and procedures, and so forth. And to me, that's what this whole survey system is about, is about improving instruction, about improving, you know, the quality of the schools and so forth. It still bothers me. I'm going to support the plan. I look forward to the data coming back next year so we can review it, and a healthy discussion on whether it would have or would not have been helpful to have that feedback.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Mr. Fadavine.
I guess one comment. My understanding of the parent feedback of being 10% through surveys, that's going to not be attributable to any single teacher, but sort of as a group.
Correct. That is a recommendation from the state guideline, that it not be attributable to a certain teacher, but that it's whole-school parent feedback.
Right, right. I guess my concern, having that number at 10%, is sort of high, in my opinion, and takes it away from individual evaluation, and sort of as a group evaluation, which defeats the whole purpose of individually evaluating teachers. So I think that, in my mind, is a higher percent than I would have liked to see, but I understand that's what it is, and that's the recommendation, and I guess we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, we don't have any option to change that 10% number, but I think what's important to understand is that when the parent survey is administered, and when we get feedback, and as I said, we're looking at the school climate survey, we already have the feedback, schools are going to identify collaboratively two or three areas where they felt they needed to work, and teachers are going to choose what do they think they need to improve in their particular classroom, and that's how they set their goal. So it is a collaborative effort from the administrator down to the staff members in the building. What do we see from the data? What information do we get back? And how are we going to work to improve this together?
The point on the 10%, Paul, is there's no choice.
Well, my understanding, wasn't the choice between pay review and-
Right. But once you pick one, it's 10%.
Correct.
You can't do five and five. You can't say, "We're going to do peer review for 15%."
You could do a peer review for 10%.
You could do peer review for 10%, and then your parent's is zero.
Yeah, that's a possibility.
Right, well, they considered that, and they decided to go with the parent.
No, I've just made a comment.
Right, okay. I knew there was a question last time about why is it, why are the percentages the way they are? That's the state mandate on us.
There's some degree of flexibility.
Not on the percentage.
Not on the percentage.
Right.
But what is that percentage of flexibility? But anyway, we won't go there.
You have to ask the math committee on where that goes. They were here, they just presented.
Do you have any further comments?
The other comment I'd just like to clarify is, it's my understanding that the implementation of this program, the state provided certain ways in which this can be implemented. And our district isn't taking any of those ways, and has crafted its own way of implementing this that has to be approved by the state. Is that accurate?
No, it's not. Actually, every school district has to submit a plan to choose either the state model, so it would be the seed model, or some hybrid. We felt that there were some pieces in the seed model, and actually, the feedback we're getting back from the pilot districts, there are pieces of the seed model that are just not able to be implemented. So we felt that by knowing that information, we had that information from our consortium at CES, that guided some of the conversation we had around some of our 21 decision points.
Look, I guess I don't understand that, because on the form you submit to the state, it says implementation plan, and they list three of them. It's whole model, full implementation district-wide, whole model, at least one-third of schools, all certified teachers and administrators within those schools, whole model, 50% of schools, classroom teachers only, and administrators within these schools. And the one that's checked off is other locally determined options.
Sorry, I was going the other way. I thought you meant the whole, the evaluation plan. Right, we, as I said, we reviewed all three choices that the state gave us, and then you had the option to do a different choice. We felt that, A, implementing the whole model with all certified teachers, we weren't comfortable going down that road with our student support specialists. So we did not choose that one. Another model was a third of the schools, all the certified staff, and another model was half the schools with certified staff. And we decided that we wanted all of our certified classroom teachers to be a part of this plan in all buildings. We want all our administrators to get up to speed on this. We want all our teachers to get up to speed on it. And doing it in partial buildings, and this building and not that building, we didn't feel was an appropriate way to go. So we are implementing with slightly more certified staff members than perhaps either of those two plans presented by the state, but in absolute agreement with not very much conversation, the talk had been prior to our committee meeting, we want all certified teachers to go down the road with this plan.
Right, I just raised the issue that there's a possibility the state may say, "We don't like your optional plan."
No, no, I believe that we'll be fine with that plan. It is above what they've asked us to do, and with either of their options below a full implementation for all certified staff, as long as we had at least one-third of our certified staff members in the plan, we feel confident that our plan will be approved.
All right, but our plan does not include any administrators, whereas all three of their plans include administrators.
All our administrators will be evaluated.
On our proposed plan?
If you take a look at the Administrator Evaluation Plan, do you have this, if you look-
All right.
Do you see that?
Yeah, I got it.
Under Administration Plan, Whole Model Implemented, All Administrators Below the Level of Superintendent, it will be evaluated with the Administrator Evaluation Plan.
As well as all classroom teachers' grades, K through 12.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further questions? No? No? Okay. Is the board ready to go to public comment? One 10-word question.
Very good question, and I'm not sure if it goes to Ms. Leffert or Dr. Tidal, so through the chair to whomever you choose. When we're talking about this reevaluation, I think it's a really important point to reiterate. When we're getting data back, at no point is any published list of individual teachers made. Is there one of the breakdown, though, within the categories?
Who wants to answer that?
Go ahead, Ann.
What's going to go into the state is the number of teachers at each level, not by building collectively. So that would be, also be the only thing that's F.O.I.-able, is the report to the state. Our internal records would not be. Correct.
Okay, thank you. We're now ready to go to the public comment before the board takes action on this item. I believe the microphone here works. If not, somebody will make it work. And do I have to push a button here to make it work? Okay, over here. So please remember that we have a two-minute limit, and please state your name and address.
I'll keep it very brief. My name is Beth Griggs. I live here in Fairfield at 109 Baldwin Terrace and do work in school in Fairfield as a teacher. I wanted to stand up for a moment just to address your concerns about the workshop model that you discussed earlier this evening.
This is on the teacher evaluation plan. So comments on that is what we're taking at the moment on a public basis, though. Thank you. On the teacher evaluation plan, please state your name and address and-
Hi. Before you start my timer, can I ask for a point of clarification?
What's that?
For next year, when this is reevaluated, you said you were going to advise the board. Will the board be voting, or you're just going to tell them what you-
Let me try and, we don't respond to questions. This is a new plan that the state is giving us guidance all the time, so we don't really This is a new plan that the state is giving us guidance all the time, so we don't really have an answer to that question until we hear guidance from the state.
So this could just be it for the Board of Eds?
So please state your comment.
Kathy Coyle, 84 Sherwood Farm Road, Fairfield, Connecticut. Earlier, Ms. Leford stated that the thought was that students had different opportunities to share their thoughts about their school, and that is your perception, that really indeed is the whole point, perception. Have we ever asked students if they felt that way? I don't think we have, and I've received several phone calls that they feel they do not have that opportunity. There is currently no consistent, safe, confidential vehicle for students to share their thoughts openly and honestly about what is going on in individual classrooms. So the Connecticut Teacher Evaluation Revision was inspired by the Gates Foundation's Measures of Effective Teaching Project, or MET. In the MET Teacher Evaluation, student perception surveys were so important, they were valued anywhere from 17 to 33% of those models. Unfortunately, Connecticut's model reduces measurement to an optional 5%. Even more unfortunate, the Fairfield Teacher Evaluation Draft completely omitted any student survey. Instead, the required student feedback is composed of the whole schooling, school learning index, which is tied to a test score. This in combination with the student growth and development portion, which is also tied to test scores, is 50%. One of the issues of relying so heavily on test scores is that you realize whether the teacher was effective after the semester or year is over. Also relying so heavily on test scores does not account for the scores of students that skew these results by receiving outside tutors. Also in this model, classroom observation is worth 40%. While classroom observation is absolutely necessary, we are relying on it in administrator's perception if the students understand a lesson. Why are we not just asking the students questions like, "The teacher asked questions to be sure we're following along with the lesson, whether they agree, disagree strongly, whatever." Also, I don't understand, if I don't understand something, my teacher explains it in a different way.
Mrs. Coyle? If you have the balance of your statement, you can turn it in if you will, but your two minutes has arrived.
Okay, so just summarizing.
Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
Please.
Oh, is that, it's too flat?
Yeah, it's two minutes, and so I have to be fair to all.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Julie Gottlieb, 153 Applegate Road. Bear with me, I'm not used to being timed. Tonight, I'm wearing my Safe School Climate Committee hat, I'm the rep for PTA Council in Tomlinson. I have a couple of concerns regarding the use of the climate survey for parent feedback, even though understanding this is 10% piece of the whole pie. The parent response to the survey was mostly in the 30 to 40% range, with the middle schools at 25 to 38%, and the high schools from 24 to 42%. It was the first time we did the survey. It's difficult to assess what kind of feedback we would normally get, because the week that we were supposed to be getting feedback was also Hurricane Sandy. So we think we lost a lot of bodies there. And so I think a more concentrated effort in the next year would give us a better view, more accurate results, and probably a better response rate, to use. The findings, there's a quote in there, that it's important for further, to further investigate parent ratings across all schools and try to gather perspectives of all parents. So that was identified as somewhat of an issue in the survey. There are also 10 major categories on the survey, the great majority, except for supportive learning, focus on social-emotional security, support, connectedness and engagement, and physical surroundings, which I personally don't necessarily feel are speaking to some of the major thrust of what you're looking for. Understanding this is a whole school parent feedback, this 10%, I'm not sure I'd be overly comfortable with using those findings and assuming that they would provide an accurate base for assessment for our teaching staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you're not accustomed to timing, you've done it very well. Please state your name and address.
I'm still Lisa Haiti, and yes, I'm still living at 216 Longview Avenue, and I am still PTA Council President this year, and it's looking like next year, too, so. Please now start the time, because that was... I'm concerned, I'm speaking on behalf of PTA Council, and the concern is that student voice is not being heard. Students' evaluation of a teacher is not an aggregate of the teachers in the building. Student surveys are more directly related to teacher evaluations than using data from the School Performance Index. The SPI does not provide any student voice data, but teacher group data. There are many surveys available, including those recommended by the state. Research shows that students do provide timely, viable, and most importantly, timely data. Additionally, these surveys will provide a safe vehicle for students to voice their concerns. Perhaps this board will support student surveys as a tool for more relevant SPI data. And in conclusion, I'm going to finish up with what Kathy was saying. No one has a bigger stake in teacher effectiveness than students, nor is there any better experts on how teaching is experienced by its intended benefactors. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. State your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Lynn Summer-Matus, and my address is 775 Flintlock Road. Let's see, I am a parent representative on the Ludlow School Board, School Climate Committee, and the reason that I wanted to serve on that committee was to support Headmaster Hatze and also Fairfield-Lavo, who has, because the school has been through so much transition. And I had so much hope for the School Climate Committee, which I still actually have, but being a psychologist, the School Climate Survey was certainly unsatisfying in many, many ways because of the generalities. And as one who's tried to dig down with a whole group of people, it's the data, it's very difficult to understand whether a kid says, "My teacher doesn't listen to me because he's really talking about one teacher," or is he talking about his whole experience at Fairfield-Lavo? So I was really looking forward to the state mandate and the intent and the purpose of it, being to evaluate the teachers at the level of the classroom. And so now I understand a lot more from being here this evening about the pressure that the board was under to act and so forth, and I want to support that, but I also want to support Ms. Canelli's statement, I think you were the one that said, that in the future, that there's this wealth of knowledge from the kids. I have three girls that went through Fairfield-Lavo, my last one is a senior, and ask any one of them, they will be able to tell you, who are the strongest teachers, who are the teachers that are easiest, that are the most popular teachers. When I asked my daughter about this just the other day, she said, "Well, they're the best teachers, and then they're the easiest teachers." There are no dummies, these kids, and they could fill out a survey and tell you a lot about things that we could build on at Fairfield-Lavo, as well as where the problems are. And I think it's a shame not to include their voices at the earliest possible convenience.
Thank you very much. I see no further public comment, so back to the board, Mr. Confortito.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion. Amendment would be that the Board of Education approve the submission of a Fairfield Teacher Evaluation Plan, the Fairfield Administrative Evaluation Plan, and the Alternative Information Plan to the State of Connecticut for the 2013-2014 fiscal year, and that the Plan be reapproved for the 2014-2015 fiscal year.
I have a second, Mr. Lou. So Mr. Confortito made the amendment, so do you wish to make a comment in support of that?
Yeah, I understand the time constraints of this and the mandates from the state putting this down. I think that what we have meets what the state's requiring of us. I'd like to see this go a little bit further with a little bit more direct input from the stakeholders. So I'm willing to let this go forward for a year, see what the data shows, is it giving us what we want? But I'd really like that opportunity to see, if it doesn't, that we have the opportunity to change it.
Mr. Lou, you seconded it?
Yeah, and I agree completely with what Mr. Confortito said, as well as Ms. Canelli. I also think that we should get it on the agenda next year with enough time so that we don't feel like we're pressed up against the wall, so that we can discuss how this is going to be done, and hear possibly from this committee a little bit about their findings and some of the ideas what they could take from having stakeholders included.
Mrs. Iaccone and Mrs. Canelli.
Thank you. I actually think the amendment is redundant, but necessary, given the gray area around it. You know, I really think that when we are in charge of ultimately approving a plan, if there are changes to that plan, that those changes need to come before this board is a matter of practice. But I understand, I will support this, and I think it's a good idea, given the fact that, quite frankly, I'm just going to throw this right back at the state. I mean, they were the ones who did it, they were the ones who pushed it, they were the ones who want it, and they were the ones who left us out of it. So, you know, I'll leave you with that, and I will support this.
Mrs. Canelli?
A couple of things. First, one thing which I think is an important tonal attitudinal point, I agree with Mrs. Iaccone regarding this feeling of the unfunded mandates coming down at us, but I would be loath to adopt that as our tone, in that I think this can be a great thing, and the fact that we were forced to do it, I think that's sometimes the role of government. We have dead wood, we have poor teachers. I think by and large, they have been outstanding. I really, I have loved my children's experience. There's one teacher in the audience right now who would go shooting past proficient if she asked my daughter. Thank you. And it's, but I think, I think it's very, very important that Fairfield not adopt the position of, "We are complying." I think we need to embrace it. We were forced to do something which we very much hope is going to have a tangible connection to improving teacher instruction, and we did have to be forced to it. There was no motion on the board, and as far as I'm aware enough of previous boards, to do anything so rigorous. That said, it's absolutely a headache. I don't disagree with that, but I don't think it's something we should embrace as a bad thing. Getting on two other points, I'm getting back to Mr. Lou's point. I think what would be incredibly helpful and absolutely address his point is if we not wait until the end of the year to get these kinds of updates, whether it's part of a superintendent's report, or Mrs. Leford is invited back to the table, but this does have a number of deadlines all throughout. There's the opening part where the teachers are conferencing, there's the mid-year conferencing, there's the end, and I think those might be logical points for us to get updates, so it's not just this siege at the end when we might have budget issues. And last thing, I too commented on, I noticed what Mr. Confortito did and forgot to ask it of Mrs. Leford, but this idea of needing student feedback...
Mrs. Canelli, first, if I can. We're talking about the amendment, which is to add that phrase.
Yes.
Mrs. Iaccone, I believe, will accept it as, I think she made the original motion?
No.
Who made the original motion?
The original motion.
The original motion, who made the, Pam did. So I believe she is willing to accept it as a friendly amendment?
What?
The original motion, and so I'm asking...
Mr. Chair, a point of order, having received the backlash on friendly amendment issues, I think my amendment is substantive and should be voted on by the full board.
It would like it voted on, I don't know.
Yes, and in response to Ms. Iaccone's remarks, make no mistake, I don't think that this is something to weed out bad teachers. I think this is a thing, and it has to be looked at in its intended framework, is to identify issues, if you have them, with staffing, and set up a process by which you can improve that. I'm not looking to use this thing to get rid of people. I'm looking at this survey as getting the data, be able to set an improvement plan in place to help people out if they're struggling in certain areas.
Mr. Chairman, can I just clarify?
Mrs. Iaccone wants to make a comment.
I don't want anyone to think that I'm having an issue with this because it's a mandate. I'm having an issue with it because they left us out of the process. It has nothing to do with, I have a whole nother issue with unfunded mandates, we could be here for five hours listening to me rant. My issue is that they put this on us and told us, and we're going to, and didn't allow us any input into it, and then said, "Now pay for it," and they weren't even going to bring it here. That's where my problem is.
And I'd like to focus debate on just the additional line...
My concern with the amendment is that the state has changed the benchmarks and the dates and the timeframe throughout this whole process, and I think that we need a timeline which we can assess what we have, do we like it, and do we re-up it, or do we tweak it and move it forward?
Any other commentary on the amendment? Perhaps our secretary can read the amendment, the line that will be added after the final word of Department of Education?
After the Connecticut State Department of Education, "for the 2013-14 fiscal year, and that the Plan be reevaluated for the 2014-15 fiscal year." Is that correct?
No. Any other comments on that before we go to a voter?
I thought it was reevaluated and voted on.
And voted on, yes.
Oh, okay. And voted on.
And approved by the board.
And voted on.
Or approved by the board makes it better.
Well, how, would, what, do you want to have it be, because it's your words?
Can you read back what you have?
"For the 2013-14 fiscal year, and that the Plan be reevaluated..."
And reapproved for the 2000, and reevaluated and approved by the board for the 2014-15 fiscal year.
Does that clarify it, Mr. Fadveen, for you?
Okay, so, and...
I think so.
And approved by the board for the 2014-15 fiscal year.
Any other comments on the amendment? If not, can I assume that the public comment that we had on the overall plan is sufficient, and this is just an added phrase? I see no public comments, so we're back to the board. Are we ready to vote on the amendment, and the amendment only? All in favor, raise your hand. We have a unanimous vote. So now we're back to the main motion as amended. I hope everybody understands the additional phrase that you just voted on.
Move to call a question, Mr. Chair.
No debate, all in favor of calling the questions? Questions? That is a unanimous vote as well? So we're now to call the question. The recommended motion is on your agenda with the added phrase that we just stated. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Three, four, five, and we have a unanimous vote. All eight members present have supported it. So now we, thank you very much.
I'll be chasing you for your signature at the end of the meeting, so I can get this to the state tomorrow.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
So now we retire back to the audience so that we can hear the Riverfield presentation. So I'd ask the Riverfield group to come up and get themselves ready as we move down.
...about the Riverfield School renovation project. We sent down a note and a package of information, and basically what it stated was, "We started this process March of 2012, when the committee was first named, and we got together and finally started putting together all the facets that we needed to do, which is naming architects and construction, management, and so forth." But what we did then, after we got all these people in place, was to look at a lot of designs, various designs of how we can establish a building that met all the educational specs that we had been given by the Board of Education. And we spent a great deal of time in looking at variety of designs in four major schemes with iterations all the way through the process. We wanted to make sure that our objectives included meeting all those constructions, or the, all the mandates that we had for educational specs, which included getting rid of the portable classrooms, implementing all the building codes, upgrading our core facilities, installing new sprinklers, new fresh air, air conditioning, and overseeing We have developed a plan tonight that we wanted to present to the board for your approval and your perusal in a number of options. And the reason why we've been in contact through the First Selectmen's Office and the Board of Selectmen, engaging the climate of how much can we spend on this particular project. Dr. Tidal has been very helpful, as so is Mr. Tetra, our First Selectman. There seems to be, the one number that kept popping up was a $13 million estimate that's in the waterfall capital plan, and that is where we'd like to position ourselves. We went through all the plans and designs, attempting to get to the $13 million. What we ended up with was a plan of $15 and a half million that met all the educational specs. It met not only the educational specs as we were handed over, but also included another $200,000 of additional security that we met with the Fairfield Police Department. They did an audit of the school, and we also put down, in our estimate, money to protect the physical school. Option A... Option A is what we originally started with, and that was 15-1, before we added in the security and some additional items, which then turned into 15-ah. At a meeting with Dr. Tytle, with meeting with Mr. Tetra, we knew that there was a real desire to get down to $13 million. We took a look at all the various options that we had, and we took a look at saying an option B or C. We reduced the square footage in the service areas, and reduced our FF and E by 300,000. The central office with Tom Dolan and Sam Morbien were very helpful, and determined that we had enough furniture within the system to outfit the school, and we could eliminate 300,000 from that. That option also eliminated 1,000 square foot with the service areas, which had no meaningful impact on the education of the children. We're talking boiler rooms, we're talking the cags rooms. So option C, we put it together and said, "This was something that we could all live with." We then looked at this in combination, as we talked to the principal, with a science classroom and a larger music classroom combined, in that as far as we are understanding, these particular classes were not being taken at the same time and could utilize the same space. That budget turned into 14.4, if we reduced it to another 1,100 square feet. And that's where the committee was at, 14.4, 14.485 to be exact. And that included all the air conditioning, including all the fresh air, including getting rid of portables, all the building upgrades, the core facilities, except for those we noted in the last two options. At the meeting with the First Selectman, we also gave him the option of supporting us as a 14.5, or if he really needs to get to 13, the best we can do is 13.6, and that would be removing air conditioning from our new areas. Okay? And let his boy, the First Selectman, say, "Given the economic times, given where we are as a town, he really needed to hold the line on capital spending as close to the 13 million as possible." We then have the, the last option, then was option E at 13.6, which included reducing square footage of air conditioning within the building. Hope you'll excuse me. I have a speech problem. I had a open heart 16 years ago, and during the operation, they killed one of my vocal cords. So I only have one vocal cord that operates. Before that, I was a drill instructor. I'll let your imagination wander with that. It was not this soft, I can tell you that. So, we were at, at the First Selectman's office, and the 13.6 was the plan that he said he would be willing to take to the BOS with a positive endorsement. The only caveat that we did agree on, that we would have an ad alternate of $110,000 to put air conditioning in the APR room. Okay? Which means that the final analysis, if that was approved by the BOS, the BOF, and the RTM, okay, we'd have air conditioning in the gym, the media center, the fifth grade wing, and the APR room. Extensively, then, okay, we'd have cost, some classrooms without AC, but a great deal of that building would have air conditioning. And so we found that, that that was a livable place that we could be in. At this point, we decided that we really needed to come to you folks, because we have, in all these options, reduced the educational specs. We know that. Okay? But we want to make sure that what we did reduce, combining the art music room, reducing the square footage for the service areas, was meaningful, was not as meaningful as the rest of the ones that we did fulfill, because we're going to go forward to the BOS with these same plans, and the BOF and the RTM with these plans, because we need to get approval, and we need to get this approval by June 30th. Okay? So we can get to the state. This plan will deliver a school starting construction June 2014, finish of September 2015. It will save us over a half a million dollars in rising escalation inflationary costs. If we don't make it to June, and if we don't get special legislation, okay, after that, then the town will be on the hook for another half a million if we waited another year. So it's imperative for the fiscal perspective not to wait. So I'm going to have the architect, Mr. Borison, Cattlerger, George Cattlerger, take you through very briefly, okay, the different floor plans, and I mean briefly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ken Borison here. Tom actually went through pretty much what I'm going to go through, so, and I think you have the packet, so I'm going to do this pretty quickly. But this was the original plan, option A was the original plan that we submitted to the Board of Selectmen that had all the ed spec items in there. And with the exception, the Board of Selectmen asked us to go to the police, get their input after the new town issues, and so we ended up taking, and this is at 63,433 square feet. And so after that meeting with the police, we essentially, we put this in yellow so it's readable, increased the size of the vestibule so that people visiting will sit out here, and there'll be ballistic glass here, and, and that increased the square footage to 63.6, and that increased the cost of the 15.5 that Tom spoke about. We knew we had to get it down because of the climate, of the, the economic climate in the town. And one of the things we noticed was when we increased the size of the vestibule and took the seating out of what was the administrative suite, we were able to move the occupational therapy, physical therapy room into here and tighten this up, and then just by tightening up the conference room and the custodial office and instructional storage by about 100 square feet for the custodial and instructional by 100, and the conference room still seated the number we wanted, and it got slightly smaller, we were able to take 10 lineal feet off of this entire length here. So that really didn't affect the ed specs other than a slightly tightening of some storage space and custodial space. We also were able to take 100 square feet off of the back of the gym, when we still were able to get the number of people in the gym. So that was our first value engineering cut, and that got us to the 14, the 14.8. And then the second was really based on some comments that we heard during the programming, which is the science room isn't always used, and we have two music rooms, and could they share the science and music room? One of the music rooms with the science room, so it kind of became a flex room. So that square footage here disappeared, science room went over here, and that kindergarten went over to here, and that got us another 1,120 square feet, which was significant, and got us down to the 14.4. Again, as an alternate, as we were, you know, the, the building committee, really, everybody wanted air conditioning, and we agree also, but again, as a compromise, we said if we air condition, re-air conditioning the gym, as Tom mentioned, do an ad alternate for the, the all-purpose room, the media center is air-conditioned, the fifth grade wing is air-conditioned, I believe the administrative suite is, is, has some air conditioning. So that would be a fallback with the idea that there'd be an alternate. That basically covers these four options for you.
Thank you, Ken. And, and the reason why I came here tonight, really, is to make sure that the members of the Board of Education can live with what we did to the educational specs and the minor modifications, because we are going to have to push forward to the BOS, to the BOF, and the RTM. And I can tell you, very adamantly, by the way, that there's no way this project can come under 13.6 and deliver what the committee considers to be, okay, a meaningful school renovation project. So if it comes down, they will be having somebody else carry my briefcase. Okay? Thank you.
You have one minute by 15 minutes? You would be welcome to come up to the table, Tom, if you would like. Oh, and you can also, there's room on the, and you could take the, Mr. Confortito, I think, had a question that related to the boards. So the problem with putting them there is that then the TV camera sees the back, so put it off to the side and we'll see.
Yeah.
Okay? So, okay, so, we're now into questions on this presentation, and I assume, Mr. Confortito, do you have the first question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. First, thank you for the presentation. I think that's the first the Board has seen of this project, and thank you for the work that you put in. Through the chair to Mr. Quinn. The changes that bring the budget down to 13.6, from a construction standpoint, the air conditioning, which is the ultimate one, the 775446, I assume that that's the light blue area on the schematic, as the, the rest of the building is air-conditioned, is my understanding?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
The whole, the whole back-
The back portion, yes.
Okay. Is not air-conditioned, right?
That is correct.
That's all new construction. That's what we're, we're eliminating the air conditioning in that. Okay? That's what that 775 represents, right?
The only, is the gym will be air-conditioned.
Okay. The ductwork and the mechanicals in that building, will they be constructed so that at such a time, a later date, it is possible to install AC at that?
I had, Mr. Captain, check on that with the MEP. And George, you want to address that issue?
It might be easier if you just came up and took one of these microphones over there. Thank you.
Good evening. The ductwork wouldn't be in place for the air conditioning to be added, but to add the compressors and all the other mechanical equipment to support it would involve some major impacts on the infrastructure for the roofing systems. So unless you put in the structural supports for the future air conditioning, you would be wind up taking apart substantial parts of your building to support the rooftop equipment necessary.
Is there an alternate amount of money out there, what that would be at this point in time?
It's the figure that we have for the date. Like, I believe if we'd had the 775, we could put the air conditioning back into the facility.
But if we just wanted to put in the structural member so that we can add it in later, what would, do we have a number on that?
We don't have a number for it, and it's difficult to try to assess what the systems would be in the future. The mechanical systems we would specify now could change two, three, four, five years down the road. So making assumptions on where the systems would be, or where the supports, how large they should be, is really counterproductive at this point.
I did talk, so you, I did talk to the Indian Mechanical Engineer, and he said that if we wanted to put in ductwork now, okay, which he didn't recommend for the reasons George just gave you, that when we get around to it, you don't know where the whole science of air conditioning will be, and whether or not there'll be the right ducts and the right mechanicals, but he said you would be eating up around quarter of a million to 300,000. Okay? Ballpark estimate. Okay? Of stuff that you put into the building, which would not be usable at this point.
Is there a forced fresh air system in the new wing?
Yes, absolutely.
There is?
A brand-new system throughout the school.
Okay.
Throughout the school.
No further questions, thank you.
Mrs. Iaccone?
Thank you, everybody. As you know, as laid out in the letter that Mr. Quinn sent to everybody, this has been a long, arduous process, and really, what we need tonight is just a sense of the body so that the building committee can move forward and tell the Board of Selectmen that they were here, that we're okay with these options, should one of them be approved. So I'm just asking for your support for that tonight. We've spent so much time working through this. There are what I would call minor changes to the ed specs based on what we're looking for, and I really strongly feel that we'll never get a project passed at $15 million. And this is the closest we can get to the waterfall placeholder of $13 million. I don't like the idea of losing the air conditioning, but, you know, if we can just get these, this through the bodies, and should we have the money, and, you know, we can do it as an ad alternate, that would be great. But really, I think what the most important thing tonight for us to do as a Board of Education is to tell the building committee that for whatever dollar amount funding they receive, we would be okay with any one of these options. So that's, that's what we're asking for your, for your consideration.
Perhaps if we just had a quick round, and it's easy for you to just say yes to whatever Pam said, and then we can move along more quickly. But, Mr. Carey, do you have a comment on, on the sense of the body?
Might there be time for more questions, Mr. Chair?
Please do.
Okay, thank you. This is the chair to, I don't, I don't see Mr. Cullen, rather, so I don't know if he is there. Do we have an idea if this changes the, the capacity rating on the building by the reduction of the space? Do we have any idea on that in terms of what we're looking to achieve in it?
No, I can answer that question for you. As we ran it through, you know, the central office, there's no change in the number of students.
That the building can contain. And, and I'm remiss, I apologize. Thank you very much for coming this evening, Mr. Quinn, and to the members of the committee that are here. I know this is a very arduous task, and we appreciate your service to our community and the amount of time and effort that goes into this. It's-
Thank you.
Very time-consuming, and I was recently moved on to a committee assignment that Mr. Dwyer previously had, where they're working through the process of doing these things. And I'm very appreciative of the fact that the building committee has come back to us and said, "Hey, this might not meet the criteria that you originally asked for," and included us back in the process. In years past, we'd come to a number in the town, and by the time the building was done, is when we'd see it again, we'd have to sign off on it. So I think this is a great improvement in the process, and I greatly appreciate that. In terms of our consolidation of the science-music, what's the impact, again, to the chair, to whoever is the best person, either the building committee or maybe our educators, what's the impact when we have a school fully at capacity? If we're running the school at, you know, 100, 110% at some point, what are we looking at by consult, by bringing down that 1,000 square feet?
Is that a question that the principal of the school might want to respond to?
I can do my best to paraphrase if you guys want.
Please do.
When we sat down and looked at everything, as it turns out, throughout the district, for one reason or another, mainly a lot of it having to do with enrollment, the science rooms are actually not being able to be used for fully utilized, fully utilized science rooms to begin with. And then due to some things because of the curriculum, they're doing more science things in the classroom than then they originally thought when they- in the classroom than than they originally thought when they planned out the whole idea of having a science, separate science room. So with that in mind, knowing that really there, I don't think we could identify maybe a single solitary dedicated science room throughout the whole district, we, in discussions with administration, decided that it would probably be a better use of our space and money to combine the music room with the science room, since those rooms are not occupied one-hundred percent of the time all day. So it could sort of become a shared space between the, and still meet the programmatic needs.
And then my last question, again, through the chair, I think this one goes to Dr. Tidal, or appropriate member of the administration. Am I correct in assuming that we've used up the majority of our waterfall allocation between PCBs this year, high school requirements? Are we, it sounds like the first selectmen's on this number, and I know we have kind of a bucket to work out of, but that bucket's leaking a lot, so.
Well, we revised the waterfall to accommodate the Osborne Hill project. And so that big chunk, kind of little unexpected expenses, were built into the waterfall that went forward on a capital planning summit. The Ludlow High School expansion project does fit in with the waterfall numbers. In fact, it might be slightly lower, because you remember the board deferred on the bathrooms. So we've got a little more there. And this was in the waterfall at thirteen million. There's also a couple other pieces in that waterfall that may get pushed off as well. So I think we're in the ballpark. I don't think this prohibits us from doing something else next year that we were going to be able to do. But the, you know, the waterfall's a planning document, it's an estimate, and we'll have to, you know, factor that in to future projects that we might bring forward to the board.
And are we comfortable that we can run the program based on what we have here before us, and what looks like is going to be option?
Yeah. I think, you know, the air conditioning's a big deal, and it's something that I think the building committee, and I agree with them, they want to go forward with this, construct the thing, and then two years from now, someone says, wait a minute, there's no air conditioning? What, what happened? So that's, I think, you know, the big part here. Everybody's worked cooperatively with the architects, with the principal, with Tom Sal, and try to get this thing down. And, you know, ultimately, the actual price of this will depend on what the bid is. So, you know, it could be thirteen million when you're, when you're done. So that's where we are with it. That was, that was a big, that's a big visible change from what people were expecting, so I think that's why we felt like you needed to come back to the board.
So the answer to Dwyer's original question, yes, I would be comfortable.
I'm sorry, that was a long way to say yes.
Yeah. I would be comfortable, based on the responses I just got, with any of these choices as prescribed by our building committee. And again, thank you again for all your efforts, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Fattabean, do you have any questions or commentary on these alternatives?
Yeah, I have a few questions, I guess. My concern also is McKinley, as I understand, does have a dedicated science room, as does Straffield, I imagine.
They're not using them for science rooms.
I'm just, I'm just making a comment. So this would be one of the first schools that we are approaching with different interpretation of the ed specs than prior schools, which takes some thought and consideration, I think. And I'm, procedurally, I'm not comfortable with being a sense of the body vote, because I don't think it's properly a sense of the body vote, because it's something in which this body has jurisdiction over. So procedurally, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that. I do have concerns of, if you prove over the other town bodies as well, and where that's going to go, and moving forward too quickly in a direction that may be problematic in the future. Those are my concerns and comments, and I'm not sure which way's the best way to go right this second.
Do you want to go now, or do you want to?
I mean, I can wait in case, because I can clarify a couple more things.
So the liaison to the Riverfield Building Committee will sum up, if you will. Mrs. Gerber, if I can just go down the line, if I can. Mrs. Gerber, do you have any questions? And are you satisfied with the sense of a body commentary?
Yes, I am.
You are. Mr. Lou?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Convetito?
If I could just address Mr. Fattabean's concerns, we just spent close to six million dollars renovating Sherman School and did not add a science classroom. So this is not a precedent setting. And, you know, as much as I fought for one, we didn't get one. And programmatically, it has not been an issue there. So whatever that's worth, you know, I'm happy saying that this substantially comports to the ed spec and that we will, you know, move forward and adjust that at their request.
Thank you. Mrs. Cannelli?
Just one quick question, because I really do hate the thought of giving up on the air conditioning. I mean, notice, even in the older part of the building, administration is getting it, as well they should. I remember the discussion years, I don't remember which school it was that was up for renovation, when the topic of air conditioning came up. Very simple question to anyone opposing it adding, how many adults would buy a car nowadays without air conditioning? And June is absolutely brutal. And so my question, and I don't know if I should address this through the chair to Mr. Quinn or to Mr. Iacono, I can't help but resist when you're talking, looking at trying to cut, is there a way to bring income in? And so my question was, if, was at any point solar energy considered, with the idea being, we put this in, that what is going to add an expense, we have away over years that it's going to be cutting expenses? So was that ever something?
Well, yeah, we went through a whole discussion on green energy, green buildings, green, and we're building to silver, lead silver, I think. And so, yes, that was something we talked about. And don't forget, don't give up on the air conditioning. It's not, if they go with option D, we're asking that it be an ad alternate. So if there's money there, that they would then do the air conditioning, so.
I think that's important. It's also important to know that the committee really wanted air conditioning in this building. Okay? I mean, this, this took many hours of pleasant discovery among our group, and also the parents. And there's good reasons to have air conditioning. You're talking security, okay? Because if you don't have it, people are tempted to open windows and things of that nature, which would defeat some of your other security items you're doing, the health of the children and the teachers. Because we all know that, you know, the amount of allergies today is considerably different than it was years ago. And, you know, thanks to my grandchildren, I now suffer the same. But, you know, overall, air conditioning will provide a better learning environment. And we will go out to fight for that, because we truly believe in it. But I also know the economic realities, and I'm trying very desperately, with your help, to get this project done and get it going. And I don't want to get to a position where I don't give the other bodies a place to cut to get down towards that waterfall number.
Mrs. Cannelli, how are you on the sense of the body?
I'm fine with proceeding, but I didn't actually get an answer from Mr. Iacono. Why was it, why was that not considered as a way that could sort of be factored in as it's bringing the cost down?
The time, the, you don't get the rate of return fast enough for it to make any sense.
It was a long, long time.
There's a way to say that, I can't think of the words, but that's the bottom line.
There's an old adage that I had, and, you know, every year, when I ran a company, people come in and say, if we buy this, you'll save ten percent on your cost of production. Over ten years, okay, I expect I have zero cost of production, because I bought it every year. And that's not the way it works. Those things change.
So, Mrs. Cannelli, how, you're, you're okay. So I have a, the sense of the body, I think, Mr. Quinn, is that we find your planning acceptable, and we'll make the adoptions. I appreciate that. The changes as it comes back through. We probably will not be addressing this again until we hear something from the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and all the rest. There's a lot of effort that you have in front of you.
Yeah, thank you.
Iacono, do you have any final comments you want to make?
No, I just want to thank everybody. This has been a huge, huge team effort. So I thank everybody who's been involved. And I thank the board for indulging us and trusting in the committee to move forward with the different options, and the town can decide what they want to fund.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We now have the most exciting part of our agenda, which we wish we could have gotten to earlier, and that's the presentation of superintendent's recommended budget adjustments for 2013, 2014. We will not be voting on these tonight, we will just be hearing, here are the recommendations. We would like to get some feedback from board members, especially if there is a majority of board members that find one or two or three of these lines just unacceptable, and that Dr. Tidal needs to find an alternative to that. So over to Dr. Tidal.
Do we have them?
All right. No, you don't have them yet.
Oh, okay, okay.
They be. They were being worked on till about 5:30. So before we even get to the recommended numbers, I want to pass out a document that recaps exactly where we are financially. Meg has those, and we do have enough for the audience. So let's just start one document at a time. Being a teacher, if I give you the second document, nobody will pay attention to the first one. So I just want to take five minutes to review the numbers, because this budget has gone through a lot of reductions at various points. Yes, that one. As a matter of fact, this budget went through reductions at least four separate times, between the time it was proposed and the time it was finished last night. So I want to review that, so everybody knows where we are financially. I know this isn't thrilling, but this is the baseline. We made a hundred copies, so if you want to take some for your friends. We'll post all this tomorrow on the website, district website, under Budget, so you can have at it. So this document is called Budget Recap 2013-2014. And it actually begins with the Board of Ed-approved budget. It's actually a reduction to my recommended budget, but we didn't even have that step on there. So you might recall, the Board of Ed-approved budget was a 4.63% increase. The first selectman then reduced that amount on account of favorable health insurance claims from the time the budget was adopted by the board and the time he proposed his budget of a million-one, that brought it down to 3.89%. When it went to the selectman, by then, it was another hefty turn for the better on the health insurance claims, as well as, at the board's insistence, we had put the health insurance out to bid. And we had some preliminary figures that even if we didn't change carriers, we would save money on administrative and stop-loss claims as a result of the bidding process. And those two cuts combined, along with the first cut, was the Board of Selectmen health insurance cut. Now, mind you, they can't tell you where to cut your budget, but basically, this is the sense they had of where you would take the money from. At the same time, the town received pension, changes in the pension projections, which they also took as a cut. And the net effect of all that was, the budget emerged from the Board of Selectmen at a 2.69%. Although I would say at that point, the budget had no substantial cuts to it in terms of operations or programs. So far, so good? I know this is like reliving a bad dream. Then it went to the Board of Finance, and Board of Finance reduction of a million-two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars was, while they didn't specify any particular cut, at that point, we were able to project, we thought that the savings on the bid by changing carriers, at that point we had made the decision to change carriers for both the medical and the dental, that that would be worth about $500,000. They knew that, and they understood that that money would probably be applied, would likely be applied to the $1.25 million cut. And that left our budget at 1.85%. And in round numbers, at that point, now we were looking at reductions to programs and operations of about $750,000. Then, there was last night. Last night, the RTM cut an additional $500,000, with the understanding that it would be okay for the Board of Ed to take another 250 out of its health insurance, because the March experience was favorable. That left our budget at 1.51%. That's our budget increase for next year. And of the 500,000, 250 could be considered part of health insurance, you'll see that in my cut list, leaving us roughly a million dollars in what I'll call programmer operational cuts. The rest of it is able to be taken from health insurance and from the bidding process and from pension. So the total budget reduction is $4,637,488. And in some quirk here, we actually go do the math, our percent increase, which is 1.51%, the increase to our budget, even after all these reductions, the increase to our budget in health insurance and pension alone is greater than 1.51%, to put that in some perspective. That's an editorial comment. All right, so that's what, that's the target number, right? Everybody okay with that? Any questions on that?
I'd just expand on the editorial comment, leaving out pension and health.
Right.
We have less money to operate the balance of the school district than we did last year.
Right.
We have less money that was given to the school district to continue to deliver quality programs to 10,300 students, but we'll not do more editorial work.
Okay. So that's the target, $4,637,488.
One question, because I know you're going to predicate everything going forward on these numbers. What if we have a bad experience rating, healthcare-wise, going forward?
Well, that's, I think that's part of the understanding of why, while we might have more savings that theoretically you could take on your March experience, that it's not a prudent thing to do, and I think that's why the RTM decided to hold that number. In other words, we have a cushion built into that.
So you're comfortable with that, too?
Yes, I am. I am.
This, this math still gets us to the one times IBNR.
Right.
Which is at the end of the year, which is kind of the net safety cushion that Aon wants us to hit.
Correct. So, all right, so that's the target? All right, so now I have a list of proposed cuts to get there. I will say that in some cases, these are cuts that had been surfaced earlier by the board, or by individual board members, or by me, in prior years or in January. At other times, they were, adjustments were able to make because information became available in the last month that wasn't available before. I tried to spread the pain around. I don't really like doing this, I have to tell you. This is now the second year out of three where I've had to come in and reduce things. It's really not why we get into this business. However, as I said last night at the RTM, I'm doing my best to minimize it. Wherever I could find something that wouldn't have a direct impact, I did. I just don't think you can get to a million dollars that way, not with the tightness. So I think I would consider the changes, I think they're going to be somewhat controversial, because no one's ever happy with them, but they're spread out among all levels and central office, and so I think we'll now pass them out. We do have copies for everybody. And these will be on the website.
Did you have, did you get one?
While they're being handed out, I would like to thank members of my team, as well as the principals and other staff who work on this, who are seeking efficiencies all the time, and who give me guidance on what they can live with and what they can't live with. But ultimately, these have my name attached to them. It's like an author of a book in the preface who writes, you know, if you like what you read, it's a team effort, if you don't like it, it's my fault. So let me walk you through this. So, let me walk you through this quickly, and to the extent you want to have discussion or questions, we'll go from there. While the central office has sustained reductions over the years, particularly in the non-certified area, we have done some reorganizing there. We have moved some people into the central office from the schools. We have a vacancy in the secretary, and we are going to absorb that. We're really running out of the ability to do it, but we can do that. We also have a media technician position that will be vacant. We have gotten more efficient in our servicing of our computer hardware and equipment in the schools through some technology and through using people more on a district-wide basis. What we want to do here, one of the reasons that number's relatively low, is that we're increasing a 10-month position to 12 months and then eliminating a 10-month position because we need more help over the summer in the 10-month position. People don't work in the summer. So, those are central office and system-wide positions. We've had a number of staff turnover. This is not teacher retirements, but for better or worse, we've had some administrative turnover. And this is turnover we expect beyond the $350,000. It's already in the budget, so I think we're safe in taking that number. Health insurance, I've listed it out the way it was on your sheet, so I didn't change it at all. So, you've got the, all those figures are as designed. So, that's what that is. The pension cost is the pension number. In programs, and there's a bit of a menu here, but somehow or other, you have to get to that bottom line. You know we have an improvement in our ELL resources. That was an important initiative, but we can phase that in over a couple of years. We're going to, I think it's about $100,000 of improvement in those resources, and we'll just phase that in. Several parts on the gifted program, that's something the Board members brought up in January. We had a whole discussion about it at the middle school level. Back and forth, it was on the list. I mean, I'm not in favor of getting rid of any programs, but this is one that was a lot of discussion about, so I have it on here on a couple of different levels. One is, if you remember, we were planning to add .2 at each middle school to have pull-out program for middle school gifted kids. That was an enhancement to the program for next year. That's about $40,000. So, one option is for you to take it back to the current level of service on gifted at the middle school level. That's the $40,000. If you eliminate the entire program, that's an additional savings of $83,000. So, the two together are $123, and that's the number you saw in January when we had this discussion. And again, while this was done fairly quickly, the other piece to that is the gifted testing. We test gifted kids three times right now or test for gifted. If you eliminated the grade seven testing, it's $9,100, and that could be done whether or not you have a program. That's on, so that's the gifted. The other gifted piece is, right now, we test in grades two and four. We had proposed going to testing in grade three. That's when the program would begin, would save quite a bit of money. The testing of the smaller kids takes a lot longer, is much more expensive to score, so that's why the numbers are different. So, that's an area we could scale back. That would not impact the services at the elementary program at all. It's simply a matter of testing one less time. I was very sensitive to the music issue. The music program here is tremendous, and I'm very reluctant to do anything with it. My goal was to preserve all that we have with the ensemble and performances. That, to me, was the number-one priority. I think when people think about our music program, while all of it is wonderful, that's what people think about. They think about the orchestra, they think about the chorus, they think about the bands, they think about all of that. I think that's when people talk about, you know, what gets them into college. I was good talking about fifth-grade general music. So, I have some reductions here for your consideration. One is, there's a music shared experience in grade four. It's a one-hour performance. It was with the New Haven Symphony. While it's very worthwhile, it's very expensive. It's $16,000 for an hour. We could charge everybody, like a field trip, $20 a kid and pay for that if we wanted to do it. Or, we could do a different kind of program or reduce the cost of the program, but the transportation and the fee is, it's a big number for, you know, an hour. Again, I'm putting that out there as something, you know, in that arena that I think is less impactful than other things. I've had out pay-to-play before. I know there's not a big appetite for that. I know that two years ago, when I surfaced a whole pay-to-play issue, we had a lot of students come in and say, "I don't want you to cut my athletic team. I'd rather pay." And I know it's a philosophical thing, and I have a modest proposal, which would be to charge a fee only to offset rental charges. It would only apply to sports where we actually have to pay rent. There are actually two different tiers of sports. Some rental costs are higher than others. This $50,000, and I'll, if the Board's interested in this, I'll give you more details before the next meeting, but if this is something that you have no interest in, then I don't want to do a lot of work on it. That's sort of where I am with it. But at $200 per sport, for the moderate rental cost, that would be $200 per sport for gymnastics, bowling, swimming, and sailing. The two sports that have the highest rental cost would be $250, and that would be skiing and ice hockey. And in fact, it was the ice hockey players who came last time who said, "We're used to paying for ice hockey. Don't cut our sport." Not that I was going to cut their sport, but they were worried about it. So, that would be the extent of this. So, it's more of a rental charge as opposed to, you know. And it doesn't raise, you know, gobs of money. The real money in a pay-to-participate is if you do it for everybody who's in a sport. But I've gotten a sense that there's not support for that. So, again, I have it out there for your, you know, consumption. We have a special education program where we rent a pool, we use a PE teacher, and the kids swim. Special Education Director says that we can meet the IEP needs in a different way and that she's willing to put this on the table as a cut. The Sped Summer School is simply a one-year savings because the summer session's going to be shorter because the school year's ending so late. So, the decision to go to June 27th is actually saving $9,000. Think of it. There's a, how do we call that? Silver lining? All right. There was a lot of concern, and this was brought up by some Board members. Again, I tried to work off some of the lists you created in January, although I don't agree with some of them, and so they're not on here. Right now, I've got a lot of concern about instructional time in fifth grade. Principals agreed that they did not want to touch world language. We had cut that before. We didn't want to go back there, but that we could pick up some instructional time if one of the general music classes in fifth grade was cut back. So, right now, there's two general musics and chorus in fifth grade. This would maintain chorus and one general music in grade five. Obviously, we'd have to do a curriculum revision to adjust for that. There's a, the Fairchild Arch for Youth is a program that's co-funded by the PTA, and it's not exactly similar to the shared experience. It's not big money, but, you know, in the shared sacrifice, maybe we have to ask the PTA to pick up the cost of that. In terms of revenue, increasing the high school parking fee. Last time we put this in, it was $100. People concerned about too many kids parking. We can sort them out by those who aren't willing to pay. It would raise $20,000 if we increased it. Right now, we charge $50 a semester, so this would be 75 a semester, 150 a year. We have a vacancy, or anticipate a vacancy in our grounds department. We believe we can eliminate that position, some supplies and equipment, and some other parts I help and save the number you see there. Capital projects, I'm always reluctant to touch those, but we have to look at everything. We had a proposal in there to enhance the capacity of the generators in our schools. This goes back to the storms we've had. We think we can do some enhancement without this, but something has to go. This would be on the low priority list. This next one has to do with custodial overtime. In the 2011-2012 fiscal year, the Board of Education absorbed about $113,000 in overtime costs that were not attributable to Board of Ed functions. This was due to a wide variety of users who are exempt from paying overtime. This includes PTAs, this includes outside organizations such as AAU basketball, the Little League, the Elks, a variety of sports teams that are not associated with the town. Rather than restrict that use, we would be asking everybody, whether they're exempt from rental fees, that's separate, we would be asking everybody who uses our buildings, who makes us incur an additional cost, to pay us for those additional costs. Of course, the option would be to not to use the facility at a time that incurred overtime. Mostly, this occurs on weekends because we have custodians on duty till 11 o'clock during the week. So, most of that, any activity that takes place on a weeknight wouldn't be hit by this. But this would hit any non-school event. Obviously, we're not going to charge ourselves. And I did feel it was awkward to charge the town since they are part of town government. And the arrangement I have with the First Selectmen on this, where we do go through with this, is that right now, there's $40,000 a year in rental fees. As you know, we collect rental fees, and we remit them to the town. We've had this conversation. The First Selectmen has agreed that in lieu of paying us the overtime, we would get to keep the rental fees. So, we'd be made whole on that front so that we wouldn't have to go bill the RTM when they had a meeting that went late, or we wouldn't have to bill the rec. department if they were running a program.
It's going forward?
This is, this would be starting next year if it were to occur. July 1st. Right. If you want to do this. Yeah. This is, this is up. So, this is a big shift. I think there'd be some pushback on this. It would require people to charge more for things, and none of this is painless completely. So, but this would, we're also going to standardize the overtime fees to a standard custodial amount and a standard overtime amount that hasn't been done. That actually, we had, we had said earlier in one of the cuts, back when the Board cut that we would increase the fees 10%. This actually standardizes the rate as well as increasing it 10%. This is an item I had on before, the elementary desktops, that we can defer on these. We're still not sure exactly what the best move is on this, and so we're, you know, we have to put off something. Our tech account, capital account, is up compared to last year, so this brings it back. We've got some better pricing on some software. As you heard from the town, we have a fuel bid. The town locked in a better fuel rate, and now that we're paying our own bus fuel, this is an estimate that I think we can realize. And the last piece is, we had budgeted in the transportation budget an additional bus because Bridgeport had informed us that they were going to start charging us to have kids go to the Discovery Magnet School, which is in Bridgeport. We're under no legal obligation to do that. I believe that's Bridgeport's responsibility, and that unless we can cover the cost of that with the grant we get, which normally you can't do that, that we would inform Bridgeport that transportation remains their responsibility. But I wanted to have it out here because if you get pushback on it, you know what we're doing. And if you decide that we're going to pick up the transportation to that, then that's the cost to us. I will tell you that Bridgeport has agreed to pick up the cost of transport in case of the Fairchild Wheeler Science School. So, this is not unusual, but I wanted to have it out there. So, you add up all those numbers on the page, it gets you to the number. So, I'll stop there and...
And before we entertain questions, it's 5:11, so we need a motion to extend the meeting. To what time do we wish to extend? About 11:30 and say, any commentary will be done by that time? Okay. There's a mumble for 11:20. We'll say 11:30, but if we can get it done by 11:20, then we will. A motion for 11:30. Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Cannelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we're all opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Okay, it's unanimous. Questions for the superintendent? Mr. Fattabeh, Mr. Convetito's gone first too often tonight. Mr. Fattabeh.
I just want to, clarification. At the RTM meeting, the RTM in their $500,000 cut indicated a preference that $250,000 of that be cut from the health insurance account or the, correct. In your number here in this spreadsheet, does that include that $250,000?
Yes.
It's the improvement in March claims.
Well, so, that's not the $250,000 that the RTM...
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
That's what it was based on?
March claims.
March claims.
Yeah.
I thought, all right. My impression was they said, you know, I...
The answer is yes, it is.
Additional $250,000. All right.
Is that it, Mr. Fattabeh?
That's it.
Okay. Now, Mr. Convetito.
Thank you for the list. Couple of things I'd like to see some data on. There are a number of daycare programs that run in the schools that run before schools open until 6 o'clock at night, and they pay zero fees. I'd like to see what a janitorial fee would be for the hours that they're there. I don't think it's appropriate. We're a non-for-profit as well, and I don't think we should be supporting other non-for-profits when they're paying staff and paying directors and so forth. I'd like to see the numbers on that. I'd also like to see the numbers on pay-to-play. If we're going to start charging, you know, partial rental fee to some athletes, I don't think it's fair not to charge other athletes some fee, simply because somebody's athletic prowess happens to be, you know, on two ice skates rather than a pair of cleats. So, I'd like to see the pay-to-play numbers out there, and those are my two comments right now. Thanks.
In respect for Dr. Tidal's comment about doing research where the Board may not be interested in going down that path at all, I wonder if some Board members would comment as to whether they have any interest in the fee to offset sports with rental charges and/or expanding it to a full pay-to-play routine so that we might not have the superintendent doing research, and it's just not going to go anywhere. Mrs. Iacona?
I believe we had a sheet at some point that said it was $250,000, but just for the record, I will not support pay-to-play. I have rationalized now that for sports that are not on-site and incur a rental fee, that we could pass that rental charge along to the user. To me, it's a user fee for something that we don't have here, and I would support the $50,000, but I would not support the $250,000 for pay-to-play.
Mrs. Cannelli, did you say you wanted to make a comment?
I don't support either.
Question.
What?
On this question.
On this question, I don't support either. I've never supported the idea of pay-per-play. The problem I have with the rental charge, I thought about it. It sounded interesting at first, and then I considered the sports. Consider bowling. We pay a rental charge. What other expenses do we incur for that sport? I think that's a very low-impact sport. Swimming, rental charge, yes. Beyond that, it costs, beyond the officials, very, very little. Then, I would consider a sport, for example, like football, which not only, while there's no rental charge, the sport itself carries tremendous expenses. If we really had to look at an income idea, to me, there should be, the one thing I would...
Well, let me stay on this topic. No to both the line that's here or an expansion of it.
Or a general activity fee.
Or a, no to that kind of fee. Does it, other Board members have comments on the pay-to-play idea so that we can give direction to our superintendent? Having heard... Tim?
Mr. Carey? Yeah, I'll, I entertain both to learn more. My concern, as I'm sure most of the Board members' concern, is understanding how we would make sure that students that don't have the means to pay are not excluded from the program.
While I'm waiting for other Board members to give a sense of where they are, I will say that I also would be opposed to either the selected sports on this line or a full pay-to-play program. That's just philosophically someplace I don't wish to go. Yes, Jessica?
Yeah, I would not support the full pay-to-play, but I would consider the rental fee.
I can point out that it is not additional work for me to submit back to you, which is easily done, the proposal we had.
Yeah.
So, I don't consider that to be in the extra work department. I can send that out again, but again, if there's really no interest in it, then there's no need to do that. But that does not cause me a lot of work.
Yeah. You know, trying to move the meeting along, I'm going to say that I don't sense that there's strong interest or majority interest to pursue the full pay-to-play, but we'll get the information. But it does seem as though the 50,000 item here might still stay on the list. Is that the correct assessment of where people are at the moment? Not unanimous, yes, but that there's a possible majority there. Other comments, Mrs. Cannelli, you were about to go down another path on another topic? Or not? I don't...
I have other questions.
Yeah, that's all right.
Okay. A few things. Again, the issue I have with that rental charge, our drama programs, we just heard about a wonderful play tonight, but those cost tremendous money. I mean, there are plenty of activities that cost money. Sports are easy to target in some way, because there are other towns that do it already. But to me, if you're going to do something, it's an activity fee across the, across the board. A student chooses not to participate, well, it wouldn't be a daunting amount, $50 per year, but I just toss that out there as an idea. Second question I have regarding the music-assured experience, would that be, if, if that were cut, that $16,000 were cut, is it then a central office decision on whether to keep it as a program? Is that an individual school decision on whether they want to charge their students and do something? How would that work?
I think we have a conversation as a district, district-wide. If we're going to keep it as an assured experience, assured means every kid gets it. And if we want to try to keep it, then the question is, how do we raise the revenue to pay for it? Or how do we create an experience that's substantially similar to that, that maybe isn't quite as expensive? So, as long as it's considered an assured experience, then assured is system-wide. I'd want to get the principals' impact on that, the music impact on that, and, you know, music, music folks' impact on that as well.
Can I ask something related to that?
Mrs. Iacono has a question for the superintendent?
Along those lines, often what I, what I hear from members of the music association or PTA is, but how can we help with programming? How can we help save something? How can we help do something? If this were eliminated, if, for example, I'll just use PTA council as an example, and I'm not holding anybody to this, I just don't know what else to use. But were to say we have a grant available and we will pick up your music assurance, how does that work? Like, do, how would you get somebody else to pay for it?
You could.
Am I asking that question the right way?
Yeah, you could do that. I mean, you could have a, you know, somebody could sponsor it, somebody could fundraise for it. I mean, we have booster club type of things, and, you know, I think that whether they would do it or not, I don't know. I mean, some people philosophically wouldn't want to do that. I mean, that would be, you'd have to approach groups, you know, independently on that. But it would be allowable.
So, if this were eliminated, somebody could step forward, an organization could step forward and say, well, we're going to sponsor it?
Correct.
Okay.
They could. It would be allowable.
Okay.
Mr. Convetito?
Yeah, through the chair to Dr. Tyler, to Tom Cullen. When we have a school's start time of 8:55 or so, what time do our custodial staff report?
Oh, Mr. Convetito, I'm sorry.
He can finish his question.
Mrs. Iacono interrupted Mrs. Cannelli, but please, no. Finish your question, and then we'll go back to, to Mrs. Cannelli.
6:00 AM? 6:30?
So, all custodial staff reports at 6:30 regardless of whether there's, that's their shift, regardless of whether there's a daycare in there or not? Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Cannelli?
I think the point you're getting at is, there may not be additional custodial costs for the daycare that you're talking about. Right, okay.
My apologies for interrupting.
Time, right.
Mrs. Cannelli?
Okay, and we are supposed to be going through the whole list, correct?
Focused on especially those areas where you say, I really don't like to see this on the list, and if there's other board...
Okay.
...express similar concerns.
I'm completely opposed to the idea of eliminating the middle school gifted program. In graduate school, the course you take regarding, required courses called exceptional learners. Grouped in the course of exceptional learners are special needs students and gifted. It is, in fact, a different way of learning, I think, to, especially with no leveling, with the exception of math in middle school. Until that reenters the conversation, I would be completely opposed to eliminating the gifted program. Also, I was wondering about the math text, that with the reduction, there had been some talk that some of the money was going to need to be moved to get the Pearson or Big Ideas. At that point, we didn't know that those were the titles. Is that something where we have room to cut there?
No, we're, we're right on the number there. We, we always had in our budget, split the math, the secondary math, budgeting over the two fiscal years, to smooth out that account. And that's what we're going to do. So, there's $120,000 in the budget we're looking at 13, 14, and that's what we'll use. The other part of the money, the 160, is in the current-year budget. And the reason we want to do that is, we want to spend, NY districts will do this, is if, if all of the money was in next year's budget, then we would have to, we wouldn't be able to get the books in the hands of the teachers before they leave for the summer. So, this way, we can buy some of it now, get them delivered, at least get a, you know, student text and a teacher manual and other stuff to the teachers before they leave, and then the rest of the books can come in over the summer, and everything will be here in time for August.
We're not talking about any other new ideas, we're just staying to what's on the list.
Well, no, if you have a suggestion, fine. Can I clarify on the gifted program? You wouldn't eliminate the gifted program, is that, do you have the same viewpoint for the...
I'm torn about the, keep maintaining it at its current level.
Okay.
I'm adamant about the, I wouldn't support the complete elimination.
Other comments that you want to make to have a different idea?
A couple of other things, and, and I spoke, I mean, I emailed with Dr. Tyler already about a couple of things. I was wondering, with last year's surplus, what accounts was that from? Is that something we can look back at? Are we on track, dare I ask, for a surplus this year? And that that might be something where, based only on trends, you might guess at?
Yeah, that's the problem at this time, you're guessing. Last year, the main reason why we had the surplus was that the town bid the electrical rates in June, and we had about a half-million-dollar favorable, I don't know, roughly, half-million-dollar favorable complete, out-of-the-sky-falling number, and we did take that opportunity to, to solve the McKinley roof problem. So, we didn't turn it all back, but after we solved the McKinley roof problem, we still had the balance. So, that was really the cause of it. Now, you know, this year, as you've seen, we do have a balance in some accounts. We've had some additional staff turnover, some different retirements. But by and large, that money is going to be expended on a couple of things. One is, all these security upgrades I'm talking about, some of which are still in the works, and that I really don't want to get into, are going to cost money, and yet everyone knows we need to do it, and nobody really wants to go for a separate appropriation on it. So, these security upgrades are completely unbudgeted. And Storm Nemo, that's the snowstorm, you've got to keep your storm straight, some people call it a Charlotte, that storm cost us about $200,000. And it doesn't look like we're going to get any FEMA money back on that, and if we do it really very late, it'll be next year. And while we did get, the town is making a somewhat hole on the Sandy, they blur together, Sandy, Irene, whatever, the Sandy money, we're still on the hook for 25% of that, and that was a big number. So, I think that basically, you know, if you look at it sort of in the big picture, that, that turnover money's really going to get eaten up by those categories. I can't, I can't say right now we can, we could do anything for sure. Obviously, if it was a relatively small amount of money, you know, could we, can say we buy something now as opposed to not later, we could look at that for a small amount of money, but we're not going to be in the 300 range or anything like that. Does that help?
Yeah.
You have a second area you want to explore?
Just last question, because now that the whole grandfathering at the middle schools has passed, as, as of next year's budget, I was wondering, and only if a majority of the board is interested in this, because I know how much work will be involved in this, I would be curious to direct a question to Mr. Vicki regarding, what if there were modifications made to the elementary school's start time, to any start times, that could result in transportation savings by being able to, you get to more Tier III buses?
Yeah, we can, I can get you some information on that. I will tell you that two years ago, I asked this question back when we were changing the high school start times, and I was on a roll with, hey, if we can save money on transportation, I'm all in. And we looked at a lot of options then. I've got to go back and look at that. One thing to understand is that the bus grid is incredibly complicated. And I, and I did have some brief conversation with Mr. Vicki recently about it. The Holland Hills run a different start time than the other schools, right? The issue is, if you try to move other elementary schools to the Holland Hill start time, you don't have enough buses, because all those buses are in use for the middle schools and some other private schools and so forth. So, there's just not enough slots to, to do that. And the Holland Hill buses actually are two-tier buses now. So, by moving them to the time of everybody else, you might lose that. So, the first blush of this was, I recall, was that we looked at the elementary start times in terms of moving them either to Holland Hill or off the Holland Hill time, and it wasn't producing anything in that regard. But I will, I will dig up some more information along those lines, but I don't hold out a lot of hope that that's got a little goldmine in it.
And I, I don't think it would have to be even restricted to those two times. If 8:30 made a difference for a school, I mean, there...
Right. The big, the big thing is the, the length of time between the tiers, and you've really backed up your elementary schools about as far back as you can, I mean, the high schools about as far back as you can take them. I mean, 7:30 is difficult. And so, really, what you're talking about then is, the only way to make a move on this would be to stretch out the time between the runs. Stretch out the time between the runs, you push off your middle school start time till later, but the big thing is, you'd push your elementary start time off till substantially later, and that just could have all kinds of unforeseen consequences that people don't like. So, it's in that category of real hard to pull off in a short period of time, but, you know, if you wanted to talk about elementary schools that start at 9:15 and end at 4 something, you might be able to get somewhere, but I just think that's a much bigger issue than we can, than we want to tackle right now. I think parents right now somewhat struggle with the start time we have, working parents in particular. So, there's options out there. I'll, I'll get you some info about it, but I don't hold out a lot of hope on it right now.
Any other comments that board members want to make as guidance to the superintendent? Did you raise your hand or not?
Yeah, I just have a clarification.
Mr. Fattabean and Mr. Convetito?
Now, all these recommended budget adjustments add up to the required number. So, to the extent that we, the board or individuals may or may not agree with this recommended budget, if we disagree with some of them, we're going to have to suggest or find other areas in which we can make up that same number. Is that an accurate statement?
Or ask the superintendent to offer a different suggestion, yes.
One other clarification this too, then? As I understand this, then, the, you have two options with the middle school gifted program. One is backed at 12-13, and one is eliminated totally. So, those are sort of mutually exclusive in the sense that you double-counted the savings. No.
No.
No, from a budget perspective, the whole program costs $123,000 plus the testing in next year's budget. So, the budgeted number for that program is $123,000.
Alright.
Okay? If you scale it back to the current level...
I got it, I got it.
Right? You'll save the 40, which is the increase.
He said he got it.
Okay, I'll stop.
Keep going, because I didn't get it. And it's math night. I was just going to bring up the same thing.
Convetito needs explanation.
Right, so, think of it this way, these are not the, you know, exact figures, because they're, you know, one year out, but the current cost of the, the cost of the current program is approximately $83,000. All right? The cost of the enhancement is approximately $40,000. So, if all you do is eliminate the enhancement, you save the 40, but the 83 is not a savings. 83's still in your budget.
And you have to find an alternative to that 83.
But you're not going to come up with a 44.637 at the bottom.
Yeah, you'd have, then, if, if you wanted to, if the board wanted to simply keep the program at its current service level...
We have to find a 123.
No, we have to find 83.
83.
Got it.
Okay.
And if that's the general direction the board wants to go in, then I would come back to you, or I would send you sort of, so here are some other choices you could have, if that's not where you want to go. And I'd rather get that ahead of time and have you have a chance, so you can, you know, make a move on it, because on, throwing things out at the next meeting of what you think might go, doesn't work well.
So, I've only heard one person comment on their attitude around the gifted program. That was Mrs. Cannelli. Do we have any other people who have any commentary on that? Mr. Carey?
I don't have a comment, but I do have a question in terms of the research. As I recall, last time I did discussion, we have an incredibly exceptional middle school population, where roughly 11% of our students are gifted, where the national average is 3% to 5%. Can we get a rough number of how many kids we're spreading this $120,000 across for our next meeting?
We can get your numbers, sure.
Alright, thank you.
I think it's actually a higher percentage than what, that we described.
Yeah, that's right. If you can get the actual percentage versus my recollection and the number of students that this, this money services.
Right. My Cracker Jack staff is taking notes on these requests.
And then, Mrs. Gerber had a comment?
Yeah, I just, I would support either or both of those, so. I mean, I just think if we keep it at the this year's levels, I don't think it's really going to be offering the help to the students, so that would be my take on it. But, but if there's not a majority support for getting rid of the program, I would support keeping it at the this year's levels.
Mrs. Iacono and Mr. Convetito, did you have your, Mrs. Iacono?
I actually agree with Mrs. Gerber. If you're, if you're not going to go with the, the enhancement, what's the point in doing the program? Either do the program or don't do the program. That's my feeling on it. I, I, I would be, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, not okay with doing anything, but I would be comfortable with this, the way that it is, and eliminating it. It's also something, though, that I actually would want to be considered for reevaluation. You know, should we be able to fund something in the future? I think that this is an area that we can improve upon. I think we put together a program that is sufficient, but I think that we could put together a program that could be better. And this is one of those places where, if this were to be cut, I would encourage administration to go back and study the program and find out, and look to ways to do it cheaper but better. And I, I think we can do that, and I actually think we can do that and deliver a much stronger program.
Thank you. Mr. Convetito and then Mrs., I'm sorry.
I'll ask him to reply in a second.
Mrs. Cannelli and then Mr. Convetito.
Specifically regarding that, Dr. Tyler refreshed my memory, but didn't we just have a whole gifted task force that specifically came up with this program, and that this is the first year that it has been implemented? And it was carefully crafted, looked at, had parents committed to that committee and reported on?
Yeah, there's a, there's a report, and we can, we can get it and reissue it to people, both the elementary and the middle school. But I'm not proposing any changes to the elementary, other than the testing component. So, the middle school one was a phase-in, and one of the reasons it was a phase-in was that, to Mr. Carey's point, that we have very large percentage of students identified as gifted, much more so than any national average would suggest. And the notion was that we were not really able to deliver, I don't know, say, a pull-out type of program experience with those numbers, but it would take a couple of years to get those numbers down. And, and so, that's one of the reasons there was the phase-in, plus, of course, there was the financial part of the phase-in, right? That, that's how we were doing it. You know, when I proposed the $40,000 enhancement this, for next year, was keeping in line with the, the gifted proposal, as you described. So, we'll get that and reissue it to the board, so you can see what it is. We did make a decision not to de-gift anybody, so we did make everybody go back to an assessment as a way to get the numbers down. And so, it's going to take several years to get the numbers down, and that, that's sort of the rub with this.
We're getting to the witching hour. Mrs. Cannelli, one last comment?
Just that, I, I guess I object to the logic that, because we can't get the enhancement, that therefore, the whole program should be scrapped. That logic doesn't... That logic doesn't work with anything we'd be looking at for a budget cut, that if we can't have our full music program, well, why cut just one class? Why not just cut the whole shebang? And I know I'm, that's engaging in a bit of hyperbole here, but I do object to the logic.
Okay. And we're also getting into the argument that we'll have to have next, next meeting as well. Let me summarize where we are. I think that it's kind of fifty-fifty, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of appetite for the high school athletics rental charges for some sports. And so Dr. Tyler probably should have something in his back pocket should, when our ninth member gets here and we have full discussion and this thing doesn't look promising, that there ought to be something that he has. We have a request for more information on the daycare, cost of overtime, and whether there's money there. And we have some information on the gifted program. And have had some discussion on it, but I don't know that there's a back pocket item that you need there, but you might, you know, based on the final discussion. That seems to be where we are at the moment, unless there's other commentary on any of the other lines. This report will come back to you on the twenty-first. Dr. Tyler will get the information that has been asked for, and this will be a voting item at the next meeting. Any other final comments from board members on this topic? Okay. The evening is late. We're now on to public comment. Can you line up so I know how much or who, so I have a judge of time? We're short on time, so I, do I just have two? I just have two, correct? I'm trying to gauge whether you're leaving for the night or whether you're speaking. One, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five. We have a requirement to not go past the hour that we set for one extension, one minute each. I'm sorry. Yeah, we're...
Okay, Suzie Byrne, fourteen hundred Cross Highway. One request to the Board of Ed that hopefully won't cost you any money. Reading all the math stuff, I realized that Core Connections was not even one of the top choices, yet it was the book that was thrust upon eight hundred and fifty algebra students this year under the guise of a pilot. I'm urging the Board of Ed to immediately develop a specific plan for pilots going forward, and I don't think that has happened at all. And I think you need to do that so that the administration can follow something in the future. Also, with respect to all the, you know, cost savings, you know, there are several ideas that many people in the community have, and I think that we need to be a bit more creative with some of the, you know, the budgeting. In terms of pay-to-play, I'm completely against it, but I'm not completely against a co-op program for football. And I'd like to see maybe the Board of Ed or Dr. Tyler investigate something of that nature. I'd also like to see the Board of Ed look into districting.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So we have to shorten...
I'll have to write you all a letter.
Please do. Please do.
Hi. Peter Jacobs, one-one-nine Limerick Road. I am a senior here at Fairfield Loma High School. And first and foremost, I would like to thank, I guess, Dr. Tyler for, I guess, protecting the music program. I originally came here tonight with the intention of seeing the proposed cuts and defending the music program, as I am highly involved with music, and I truly do appreciate the music program throughout the town. But I guess, moving on from that, I would like to raise the point that certain sports do involve additional costs for the user. I played soccer, and I know that, you know, more expensive cleats, they, you know, may lead to, I guess, less frustration, they're easier to play with. And a lot of these costs come from, or are involved in the sports that also have the rental fees, like I know hockey, there are expensive sticks, skates and everything. So if they have to pay the additional rental fee, then they may not be able to afford anything else like that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
State your name and address, please.
Tricia Donovan, one-sixty-four Tainer Drive. I'm going to be really fast. I would like to also urge the board, which already has policies and pilot studies, to further define how we use pilot studies, how they're conducted, implemented, and reported in this district. We should not have the luxury of subjecting students to a year of experimentation and possibly a loss of learning opportunity without having to publish a professional and scientific report. Pilot studies are conducted, so we can learn from them, so let's make sure that we do. It is May, and we still have no information on the CPM pilot. No paper has been presented to you or others for peer review. We need to ensure our students are protected from arbitrary decisions where the only consequence is felt are on the students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. State your name and address, please.
Don Llewellyn, five-twenty-four Surges Road. I just had a question. First of all, I want to thank everyone that was on the committee review committee. When will we see the statistical analysis of the CPM pilot? Also, in the algebra survey, I didn't see the question where the number of students, algebra students, were receiving tutoring this year versus last year? Wondering where that was. And with regard to S-PAC, it's my understanding that Roger Ledlow Middle School ran a pilot for pre-algebra students and algebra students this year. I want to know when the results will be on the Board of Ed website and when the parents will be seeing that. And in regard to the gifted program, twenty percent of the students tested into the gifted program that's saying that these students need some type of enrichment. Where is it? If we're going to take the program away, bring back leveling. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Name and address, please.
Laura Berneskeena, seventeen forty-two Mill Plain Road. I am currently the PTSA president at Roger Loma Middle School, and as you know, our principal, Glenn McNo, was chosen by the Connecticut PTSA as outstanding administrator in the middle school level. And I just basically wanted to thank Dr. Meg Boyce, Dr. Gary Rosato, and Ann Leffert for coming to the dinner, for showing your support for Fairfield, the RLS community, and for Glenn, of course. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Patton will be the last speaker.
Suzanne Meska, one-twenty-three Rigate Road. Interesting list. I know I only get a minute, so I'll go really quick. It's very nice we continue to look at programs and services, but it's the budget drivers, ladies and gentlemen, that are really going to continue to haunt you. So until we start looking at people and staffing and clerical, and I don't like to lose people any more than anyone else does, we will never have programs coming back into the school system. And it's really a sad state that where the public seems to understand it, we can't get our Board of Ed and our superintendent to understand it. Thank you.
Mr. Patton. State your name and address, please.
Mark Patton, five-oh-three Valley Road, RTM District Seven, education rep for North Strackfield School. Through this budget season, I've talked to hundreds and hundreds of parents and families in my district and across town. I think the charging overtime to PTAs is an incredibly not smart thing to do to the one organization that is the biggest partner with the school system in town. I'm also not thrilled about the computers that, if you go into elementary, any elementary school, they're old, they're lacking, software is lacking. We know that has to be done every year. We put it off. I think it's a detriment to future education and technology of our kids. That said, the one thing that parents overwhelmingly in grades four through six that I've talked to that say probably should be cut is the foreign language program since you chopped it down two years ago. As it stands, that program, nobody gets any benefit out of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're now into open board comment. Two comments. Mr. Liu had a comment. At the next meeting, we will recognize the Odyssey of the Mind participants, and you'll hear later on from Jessica that we'll try and find ways to recognize students at all of our meetings or as many as we can. I'm going to call an executive session for just prior to the May twenty-first session where all of us should be present. So we'll start at six forty-five, an executive session, so that Jerry might plan his setup accordingly. Mr. Liu.
Thank you. Really quickly, we received a very complicated document about the test results or the district-wide testing of PCBs, and I'm wondering if we could get that on the agenda and have it explained to us? There's a lot of open-ended questions in the document, and there's some very, you know, difficult numbers to understand. Hoping that we can put that on the agenda and have it explained to all of us. Thanks.
Mrs. Cannelli.
Very briefly, as of over a month ago, we do have curriculum, and the whole topic of pilots is something that the policy committee already has on its agenda and will be coming up shortly.
Any other comments from board members?
No, it's eleven thirty.
By my clock, it's eleven twenty-nine and a half. Motion to adjourn? Second? All approved? We're done.